Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. This is a regular meeting of the Select Board for, what, January 12, 2021. This meeting, like all meetings, is being held remotely using the Zoom platform and, of course, being recorded. Quorum is available at the remote locations so we are able to meet. At this time, I move that the Select Board adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of, oh, what is it? Strategy related to collective bargaining. And I declare as Chair that the reason for this executive session is that an open public meeting would have a detrimental effect on the negotiation strategy of the town. All in favor of moving into executive session? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton? I'll take that as an aye. Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Aye.
And Chair of both sides. Ms. Hamilton, did you, hold on. Okay. Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. This is a regular meeting of the Select Board for January 12, 2021. This meeting, like all meetings during the COVID emergency, is being held remotely or virtually using the Zoom platform. As such, this meeting is being recorded, and that recording will be a public record. So if you don't want your image to be part of the public record, you should turn off your video camera. So with that, let's start with announcements and updates. I'd like to make a couple announcements and a statement. First, I'd like to remind people that Monday is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which is a federal holiday, and thank you, Stevie Wonder, and the day that the MLK Celebration Committee stages its celebration event, which will be a pre-taped virtual event this year titled Pursuing Social Justice. This year's program will feature a moderated conversation on philosophical mentoring, quote, "philosophical mentoring and the impact of words on a generation," close quote. The conversation will be hosted by Nick Bates, Assistant Director for the Thurman Center Networks at the Howard Thurman Center for Common Ground at Boston University. You can access the premiere of the event live on BIG's online channel at Brookline Interactive, one word, dot org slash MLK, or on BIG's Community Channel 3 on RCN and Comcast. Recorded event will also be available to stream afterwards. Next, I'd like to note that the Town Administrator is holding a remote budget forum on Thursday evening, and this is primarily an educational opportunity to learn about the town's finances and the annual budget process. There will be an opportunity to ask questions, and I believe that Ms. Fields will make sure that we limit the questions to two minutes or provide input. But we caution residents that the fiscal year 2022 budget process is just beginning and will kick off in earnest after the Town Administrator submits his budget proposal on February 15. There will be ample opportunities for more detailed feedback and ideas before the budget is submitted to Town Meeting for Approval on May, including multiple public hearings held by the School Committee, the Select Board, and Advisory Committee, and other committees around town. The fiscal year 2022 budget is expected to be very challenging, and we support the Town Administrator's efforts to educate the public and explain the budget process and the limitations that the budget places on what we can do. If you're unable to make this event on Thursday, it will be recorded and available for viewing on the town's webpage. Finally, and yes, I am looking for my written comments, because this is a difficult issue to discuss, and I'm sure other people will have comments to make this evening. I guess I'll start off by saying, what the hell happened in Washington, DC last Wednesday? And how do we, in Brookline, as a town government, respond? I could talk all night about my thoughts on this attempted coup that happened in Washington last Wednesday. You can get better commentary and insight from the cable networks and print media. Here's why I think the concerns of the Select Board should be our concerns. First, how are we ensuring that the town and its residents are protected from the physical threats of what is a nationwide organized, and I will use this word, fascist movement, which has spread some of its roots right here in Massachusetts? Hopefully not in Brookline, but don't bet your house on it. Second, what steps can we take respecting people's rights to be stupid, to monitor and counter the silent social media presence of these fascist ideas that allows it to spread far and wide, especially in the minds of our youth? And finally, and this is the difficult piece, there are confirmed reports of police officers from New York, Philadelphia, Virginia, and elsewhere participating in the disruption. Now, these are sworn officers who take their oath to protect the Constitution. That's the Constitution of their states, and implicitly, at least, the Constitution of the United States. I'd just like to add one little thing here, that here in Massachusetts, it appears that police officers only take an oath to uphold the state constitution, not the United States Constitution. I guess implicitly, by swearing to uphold the state constitution, you're swearing to uphold the US Constitution, but I don't think that that's necessarily the case. And that's something that I'm going to urge the Policing Reform Committee to look into. But the question on everyone's mind is whether any Brookline officers participated in the DC insurrection. We don't know. We don't believe so. But if they did, we'd have to figure out what legally we can do, and that would depend on, I think, whether they participated in the breach of the Capitol or provided assistance to the breach, or just expressed their dumb views in opposition to American democracy by marching, but in the crowd. You know, with few exceptions, and it's not unfortunate, it's very fortunate here in America, people can speak dangerous ideas. Before you say they can't or shouldn't, think about, quote, "dangerous ideas," close quote, you may have spoken or demonstrated for or agreed with in your youth or maybe even adulthood, that you don't want the government stopping you from saying, marching for, or agreeing with. It's many of the conundrums that Wednesday's insurrection has created. I don't really have much more to say about it than that. I think we're entering into a scary period, and we should be thinking about how we respond to that scary period without changing America into something that we don't want it to be. So those are my thoughts. Any other updates, announcements, or comments, Mr. Fernandez?
Sure. Chair, thanks for your comments on this. You know, I wanted to share a few thoughts, too, about the attack on the US Capitol and what it means for us here in Brookline. You know, like many folks in Brookline, I was watching in horror as a Trump-inspired mob, you know, including known white supremacist groups, broke into and ransacked our Capitol, putting members of Congress, congressional employees, and the Vice President of the United States in harm's way. It's clear that they were able to accomplish this with the tacit support of at least some Capitol Police Officers, many who are being held accountable for their actions, who literally removed barriers to allow the intruders' entry, as well as their leadership, who failed to properly secure the people's house. Meanwhile, many of their fellow officers fought bravely in literal hand-to-hand combat with those who claimed to be their biggest supporters. Perhaps the bravest of all were the black officers who endured racial slurs while putting their lives on the line, even as some of their fellow officers took selfies with the mob. One of those black officers actually recounted the events of the day with a news outlet. I'd like to share some of that piece and his thoughts right now. At the end of the night, this is the piece, "At the end of the night, after the crowds had dispersed and Congress got back to the business of certifying President-Elect Joe Biden's victory, the veteran officer was overwhelmed with emotion and broke down in the rotunda." I'll stop to say, there are some curse words here. I will not say the full words for a viewing audience. He says, "I sat down with one of my buddies, another black guy, and tears just started streaming down my face," he said. "I said, 'What the F, man? Is this America? What the F just happened? I'm so sick and tired of this.'" Soon, he was screaming so that everyone in the rotunda, including his white colleagues, could hear what he had just gone through. "These are racist-ass terrorists," he yelled out. "In the seven years since Black Lives Matter has become a rallying cry, the image of a white cop deciding how and when to enforce law and order has become ubiquitous. On Wednesday, Americans saw something different, as black officers tried to do the same as they attempted to protect the very heart of American democracy. Instead of being honored by the supporters of a man who likes to call himself the, quote-unquote, 'law and order' president, black Capitol officers found themselves under attack." Quoting again, "I got called up, the N-word, 15 times today," the veteran officer shouted in the rotunda to no one in particular. "Trump did this, and we got all these effing people in a department that voted for him. How the F can you support him?" Cried for about 15 minutes, and I just let it out. End of quote, end of the piece. My own words now, "It has become cliche to note the difference between how unarmed black protesters and armed white protesters are treated by police. We needn't look any further than April 30 of this past year, when a mob of openly gun-toting Trump loyalists illegally entered the Michigan State House, allowed to do so with the tacit support of their Capitol Police. This type of unequal treatment has to be called out for what it is: racism. Some, including our own governor, have tried to draw an equivalency between those in the Movement for Black Lives and those who ransacked the Capitol. Let me say this clearly, Governor Baker, there is no equivalency between those fighting for racial equity and those who have cast their lot with white supremacists. For me, the enduring image from Wednesday are the Trump banners streaming up the steps like a battle flag as the mob stormed our Capitol. They were flanked, as usual, by Confederate flags and white supremacist insignias, an image now so common that the Trump flag has become indistinguishable from those symbols of hate. No one today can claim to support this president, who knowingly spread disinformation and incited an insurrection with 'killed a Capitol Police Officer,' and four of his own supporters, and somehow distanced themselves from the mayhem we saw last week. Those days are over. My concern here in Brookline is that we have had supporters of the president in our community and on our police force, or at least we did prior to January 6. I hope that support has vanished in the wake of these events, particularly among law enforcement, because anyone who still supports Trump today and walks the beat with a badge and a gun is a clear and present danger to the rest of us. It's time to get back to a place where facts and science matter and to move forward to a place where justice, for those who have been denied it for far too long, is our goal. It's time to put the Trump era in the history books, and unfortunately, that won't be easy. That's why I'm so sick and tired of politicians who say so much and do so little. Condemning Trump and his sycophants is easy. Refocusing your policy priorities to reduce racial and other inequities, that's what real condemnation looks like. So instead of just condemning the insurrection at the Capitol, I'm urging Brookliners to join me in ensuring that statements like Black Lives Matter and immigrants and refugees are welcome here are actually reflected through our leadership and in our policymaking, that those statements actually mean something here in Brookline. Thank you."
Okay. Any other announcements, updates, or comments on the Select Board? Okay, let's, Mr. Vanscoya?
Sorry for my hesitation. I just wanted to be sure that I didn't get ahead of my colleagues. I want to thank the Chair, and I want to thank my colleague, Raoul Fernandez, for their comments. And I want to say that they were both to the point, and I agreed with them thoroughly, and I agreed with the anger. It's hard to know what to say at this moment. It's so fundamentally wrong, what happened, that people, time and time again, say the same thing in conversations about it. How could this have happened? And how could there be such a substantial minority in this country who endorsed what happened? And I never expected to be at this point in our history, but we're here. And we do have to find our way out of this, and we have to find our way to remedy this and to go forward from this. And I want to be part of that. I think every single member of this board wants to be part of that. I think every single person in leadership at Town Hall wants to be part of that. So we've, as has become a cliche, we've got work to do. And let's do the work. And I want to say something that is, I hope, relevant, and I hope the people who listen to this can see the relevance of it. I'm one of those people who happens to think that we, at the local level in Brookline, over the years, have done a pretty good job of representing democracy, of participating in democracy, of showing our willingness to be part of democracy, and of a healthy democracy. A democracy that draws on the talents of all of us and brings us together to reach consensus, even if it's difficult and even if it requires some periods of disagreement. And in that regard, my announcement is that Brookline's official 2021 election season is about to kick off, and that as of Tuesday of next week, which I would point out is the day prior to Inauguration Day, the papers to petition to be a candidate or to collect signatures to be a candidate for Town Office in Brookline become available at Town Hall. And all of the information, of course, you know, you can do this online, all of the information is on the Town Clerk's page of the Brookline Town website. And so I do hope 2021 will be a year of extraordinary commitment to local democracy in Brookline. And a good way to get that started is for people to, if they are inclined to be part of this local government of ours, maybe this is their year. Maybe they should, you know, do something they haven't thought of, they haven't done before but have thought of doing. And if you want to learn more about it, you can learn more about it on the Town Clerk's page in the Brookline Town website. Thank you.
Yeah, I might add that you don't have to run for office to be part of the solution to some of our nations and towns' problems. You're supporting candidates, lending your voice to the debate, and making sure that your voice is thoughtful and serious so that the level of, the intellectual level of the debate generally in town is raised. And there are many other ways that you can participate in the political process, as indicated by Mr. Vanscoya. Ms. Heller? You're on mute.
Okay. Sorry about that. I wanted to add to what the Chair and Raoul and John have all said, and especially Raoul's comment that people of color and minorities and immigrants must stand together. But I believe that it goes beyond that, actually. In that crowd of marauders, of vicious, hideous, I can't even find appropriate words for them, they're so awful. But there were people wearing shirts which said Camp Auschwitz. There are people wearing shirts that said Six M W E. And for those of you who don't know what that stands for, it's six million wasn't enough. These are vicious anti-Semites, anti-black, anti-immigrant, anti, you know, minority of any kind. And while, so some of us may look white and be clumped in with white people, we're also subject to that hideous racism, a hideous anti-Semitism, and we must as well stand with those who are subject to this kind of vicious and hateful treatment. It's just, it's so important, because we can know that many of us have been subject to this kind of denigration by these hate mongers. And we have to stop that in our society. It's really gotten out of hand.
Yeah, we've always, we've always had people like this in our society. It's just when leadership gives them the breathing room to come out from under the rocks and make trouble and cause real damage. Ms. Hamilton?
Well, I don't feel I have that much more to add, so I'll just use this opportunity to plug an event that I think, you know, really brings the community together here in Brookline, which is the Inspo Expo that is slated to be online this year. And it will start at 10:00 AM and go until noon. For more information or how to get the Zoom link, you can email inspoexpo.brookline@gmail.com.
Yeah. So any other comments, updates, or announcements? Okay, let's move on to our public comment section, our segment. Mr. Quetton, did you have something to say? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fields, do we have someone in the queue to speak?
Yes. At this time, we have three people signed up for public comment. The first is Ernest Adams. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonders of modern technology. Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And before I start, what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, I think words matter, and when you see a fascist coup, we've just got to all identify it as such, it's a fascist coup. My name is Ernest Adams. I am the, my wife Christine and I are the homeowners at 129 Center Street, which is the single-family house at the corner of Center and Fuller Streets. I'm a fourth-generation homeowner. My grandmother bought the house in 1930, and this has been my home since I was born in 1953. What I would like to talk about this evening is the issue of the project which is being proposed by Hebrew Senior Life at 108 and 120 Center Streets. I know that was the subject of quite a bit of conversation at your meeting last week. And for starters, I just want to try to put into perspective the scale of this project. If it were built as described, we would have a solid wall of three 10-story buildings and a six-story building, which frankly is a larger, a larger wall of big buildings than we have anywhere else in Brookline. And I'm talking about Harvard Street, Route 9, and Beacon Street. Maybe the area on Beacon Street, just east of Washington Square, would be comparable, but that's Beacon Street. I'm talking about Center Street, which isn't even wide enough to allow parking on both sides of the street. And the operative word that hit me last week was when it was described as a campus. And I think of going into the medical area, where you go down Brookline Avenue, and it's one large building after the other, and that's the kind of look we would have on Center Street, which, you know, when I grew up, I mean, obviously, things have changed, but when I grew up, it was just a small residential street. The big issues that I see coming from this project are some of the basics of life, the sky and the sun. These buildings would essentially eliminate the horizon, and to see the sky, you'd have to look straight up. And particularly at this time of year, it would put a lot of us into permanent shade. I love the sun streaming in the, my wife's sitting room where I am right now, that would basically be blocked out. And I would just point out, looking this afternoon at the zoning bylaws, specifically 5.32, give a particular degree of protection to buildings which are, existing buildings which are on the north side of a new building looking for a high variance. You know, it's the ones that would be in the shade. Obviously, it was important to the people who wrote the town bylaws, and I think that should be given particular...
You have 20 seconds.
And I appreciate, again, I could go on all evening. Obviously, I can't and I won't. But again, I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Beth Kate. Beth, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable, and your three minutes will begin.
Um, okay. I will share a video. Hi. Thank you for hearing me. I am also a resident of this particular block of Center Street. I live directly across the street from the Jameson House, which is a historic house that will, in the proposal, will be the six-story building. And I don't know if you all are aware that the Jameson House is a historic house, and it's on the historic Brookline tour that's put out by the Historical Society. Also, the, there are a lot of existing conditions on Center Street that are brought about by the traffic and the deliveries and the emergency vehicles because of the existing buildings that Hebrew Senior Life has. And they will be exacerbated and not addressed in whatever is proposed here. And there's very, very serious safety issues for students walking to the Florida Ruffin Ridley School and for seniors walking down the block to the senior center, to Harvard Street, to do whatever shopping. And they have been discussed extensively with Rhonda and with Hebrew Senior Life, and they've done absolutely nothing to mitigate them. We've asked them to have a place to pull the 18-wheelers off of the street when they deliver food to the dining there. We've asked them to have a place for emergency vehicles to pull off the street, for cars and vans to pull off the street to allow seniors to exit safely. All of these issues have not been addressed, and they will only be exacerbated by greater density on the street. So, and I would also like to bring to your attention that this is a truly residential street, even though these two buildings on this block are high-rises and were built, with exception to zoning, many years ago. Every other house on this street is either a small apartment building or a, or a single-family house, or, and most of them are historic in nature. So I would just ask you, when you give... Um, I would just ask you, when you give your overwhelming support to this project. That you consider the neighborhood and the neighbors who have to live here and the seniors and the safety of the seniors and the schoolchildren. Who um, also live here. And thank you very much for um, this consideration.
Thank you. And uh, is my understanding is we're at the beginning of a very, very long process, which will include a lot of public comment and public input. So um, next.
The next person signed up for public comment is Janelle O'Neil. Janelle, you've been promoted. You can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me mute. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um. My name is Donna O'Neil, Town Meeting Member from precinct four. Um, also on the AC. Um, I just wanna say a few things right now. My apologies. Uh, my six-year-old pops through the screen. Um. I wanna make a small comment on. Last week and what happened at the Capitol and. I. It starts from home. And now this is what I'm gonna say. It starts from home. So our actions here. Um. It just made me think that we need to do more than just talk. We need to really act on. On what we say we're gonna do when it comes to equality, equity. At that note, I wanna, I'm gonna turn off my video. Um, my question is, where are we on hiring the um, embusmen? Um. Maybe we'll fi- we'll find a little bit of that out on Thursday at the forum, maybe, um, from Mel. Number two. I still, well, like Lieutenant Cullen Hane, remove from the liaison position. Um, for the cannabis establishments, please. That's showing action. There's. And a neighbor who is still badly affected from what happened. Um, and no action. We're talking a lot, talking, but we're not seeing anything. I'm not seeing anything. Um. Last thing I, I guess I wanna say is, I, you know. I, I feel uh, Mel, Mel Clackner and Melissa Goff have, they have a lot on their plate. As Select Board members, we needed you as we the people. Need to kinda take some pressure off of them, off of Mel, off of the Mel's and, and help. And get on the department heads. Um, we, we, we're having a hard time, we the people. Getting a hold of our department heads and.
There's thirty seconds.
Thank you. There's only so much Mel, Mel can do. Um, he, he needs a little help. So if you guys can, can help with the communication, regardless of the department heads, um, that would be helpful. Their presence, um, even, even so more is, is, is what we're asking for as a, as a, as a community in town. Thank you. I will see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Addie. Addie, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
So you having trouble again getting um, getting on to the Zoom?
He has uh. Been promoted.
Okay, okay, Addie, we're having trouble again. Um, you know, like I asked last week, you should send in your written comment uh, to the Select Board. Okay, I think.
That was the last person signed up for public comment.
Okay, I should be heard my request for a public comment or, or written comment. So um.
I'll follow up with.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to respond to the question that uh, Mr. O'Neil asked. He asked it last week again, and I probably should have updated the board. With regard to the cannabis uh, control uh, position, the embus person per se. Uh, we're down to two finalists. We're interviewing actively for that position. It's a challenging time, I will tell you, to recruit uh, in, in this environment and um. We've been experiencing that. We've got a lot of vacancies, not only in the cannabis, but you're aware of the sustainability position. Uh, the engineering position, the uh, parks and open space position. So. There is a pattern. What I'm seeing is, you know, it's the COVID environment and the time period creates a lot of uncertainty. And uh, creating some delays as well. But I did want you to know and Mr. O'Neil to know that. We're down to two finalists on the cannabis position.
Thank you. It's good to hear. Uh, anything, any other, anything else from the Select Board? I see that there are no public comments. So let's move on to um. Question of approving the meeting minutes uh, from our January five, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Any comments or edits to those minutes? I found a couple typo-type edits that conveyed to Kate. Um, okay, I move approval of the met, I'm sorry, Ms. Hamilton, did you raise your hand? Oh, just holding your hair. Okay, I do that all the time too. Um, okay, um, all in favor, Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Fernandez?
Hi.
Ms. Van Scoia?
Hi.
Here both eye. Uh, next uh. Question of approving the authorization to hire for the position of Deputy Building Commissioner. Um, in the Inspection Division of the Building Department. So uh, who is going to speak on that?
Um, no, no one, we, we do that as part of the consent, although there is truly only. Item on the consent, but uh, no, as, as um, you know, our tradition lately, at least our procedures this way, we're not inviting department heads unless we. Uh, hear that the board may have questions about that. If this is the um, Assistant Building Commissioner position, it's an important. Position. Joseph Braga was the individual who most recently uh, had that position. He's moving to become the Building Commissioner in the town of Dartmouth in Massachusetts. So. Unfortunately, that's been the pattern. Um, here in Brookline, we, we train and they, they, they go elsewhere, but um. It's a real critical position for us and we um, we. As you, as you may know, one of the few posi- few departments we've been having to add a position is in the Building Inspection Division because of the. The amount of um, uh, construction activity and the fact that if the town doesn't uh. Uh, be careful, we would lose the revenue uh, that we, we, we really rely on with new growth from our taxes. So. This is a very important position. Um, so on behalf of Dan Bennett, our Building Commissioner, respectfully request the board to authorize us to fill this vacancy.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize. I, I knew that and, you know, you, you provided extensive information in the packet. Um, and um, you know, I take it no other board members have any questions, Ms. Heller?
I just, uh, my understanding also is that this, this deputy uh, commissioner has a role in uh, zoning and supporting the zoning issues. So. It's very, very important that we get this done.
Right. They serve as the, the main uh, professional to, to support the zoning board of appeals and all of their special permits and variants uh, appeals.
Okay, good. So I, I propose that we vote this in omnibus fashion, even though it's just one. Um, all in favor, Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Fernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Hi.
Here both eye. Okay, next, remote participation in uh, town government, a discussion. Uh, this could be a presentation and consideration of a petition to uh, study the ongoing use of remote. Participation in town government. Uh, who do we have here? I see Ms. Goldsmith and Ms. Dahl. And um, oh, okay, Slowall. Okay. Who's gonna speak first? Okay, Carolyn, Ms. Dahl, I'm sorry. Need unmuted if you want to talk.
Am I unmuted? Okay.
Yeah, you're unmuted now.
Hello, everybody. Um, first, just briefly, I wanna thank you all for your words at the beginning of your meeting. Uh, which I listened to uh, intently and uh. As Mr. Van Scoia implied, we just have to keep going. So I thank all of you for being part of keeping going and being part of government. Um, and on that note, um, this issue of uh, remote participation or the, the possibility of. Codifying and continuing remote participation in town government. Um, just a little bit of background. This really just kinda came into my uh, radar after town meeting um, this fall. And there was some chatter um, about the possibility of continuing to offer remote participation. In town meeting as an option for those who would like to avail of that. Um, and I asked around a little bit and I learned that a few different. People representing different bodies in town, officials, residents, board chairs, et cetera. Um, were looking in a little bit, looking into um, and pursuing this uh, idea. Um, in some cases for boards and commissions, in some cases for town meeting, which I believe is complicated. Um, I tried to connect with Mr. Gadsby before this meeting. Um, we were not successful in connecting, but presumably were this to become um. A formal conversation, I, I would assume Mr. Gadsby would be part of that. Um, so it just became clear pretty quickly though, that with this being new territory and there being a, a bunch of sort of. Disparate threads and efforts um, underway, but not apparently cohesive. Uh, that it would make sense to ask you, the Select Board, um, to form a, a special committee to look at. Remote participation as an option and to look at how um, it might be able to be continued and codified. Um, and just that it would be best pulled together under your authority as our central municipal body. Um, to be clear again, I, in, in my mind at least, there's sort of two buckets. One is town meeting. Um, which again is probably more complicated than I could understand. And then. Day-to-day operations, um, boards, committees and commissions. Um, I've been able to participate more. Um, as a, as the public in these um, in, in public meetings in these last ten months. Um, so we do feel that this would improve public access and participation by the public. We've all seen this and experienced it. Um, we think it would um, improve. And broaden the pool of candidates for elected positions, um, including town meeting, Select Board, School Committee. Um, and applicants for boards, commissions and committees. Um. I think that tonight, I don't know that we're so much, I guess there's sort of two things here. One is to. Sort of convince you, I guess, and perhaps ask you to opine on whether you agree that this is a good idea. Um, and also to consider it as an operational matter and forming a committee. Um, so I believe that Jennifer is going to. Take it away with talking a little bit about why consider this, why this would be important.
Let me, let me just add, um, there are two issues here. Uh, one, uh, the uh. Open meeting law is a state law and uh, we're at the mercy of the state legislature in terms of any change in respect to. The participation by uh, board members, uh, either boards and commissions or the Select Board. Uh, or other elected bodies, uh, their ability to uh, meet remotely. Um, there's another issue and that is one that we, you know, have some control over and that is whether we um. Make our public meetings uh, publicly available to people who uh, are not in the room with us. And, you know, that's something that we can do. And I think, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but I can't imagine that any board member would object to that. We do. Agree that, you know, the ability of people to uh, listen in, uh, make comments, uh, you know, from their homes. At our meetings has been quite a boon to uh, democracy, to openness, to uh, just the um. Convenience of people who don't have to get babysitters, don't have to find a parking space, don't have to. You know, go through all the hassle of getting down to Town Hall to uh, come in and give their comments to the Select Board. So I think that there's agreement on that. And that's really a question of um, in my understanding, is, is the board just uh, creating a policy? Uh, that uh, we, we would do that. There is some technical issues that we have to resolve. Uh, we are looking at that and I think um. Put into uh, Ms. Fields, um, the problems that we anticipated are not uh, problems that are difficult to overcome. So I don't know, you know, if we need uh, um, a committee to go forward. Or just need to do it in, in the form of a policy, but we, I, I think, I mean, if anyone on the board disagrees with me, but I think uh. You know, we, we agree that this is a, a great idea. I mean, that the COVID emergency has created some opportunities for us, has really. Uh, enabled us to see, see some uh, ways of improving how we operate. And, and uh, that, that we wouldn't have maybe thought of in the absence of the need, you know. Necessity is the mother of invention, so. They used to say that. I think it's still a, a phrase that people use. Anyway, anyway, so what, what else do you have to say?
So I, I think I'm gonna take it from here. And Devin, should I share my own slides? Is that okay? Does.
Yes, please.
Okay, so first of all, it's really nice to see everyone. It's been a while. Thank you for everything you're doing. Thanks for having me to your house, everyone. Um, when, when uh, Carolyn and others started talking about this. It, it, you know, what you say Bernard is true. It's worked and we've sort of fallen into it and it is definitely one of the silver linings of a really dark time. But it also occurred to us that formalizing this in a way, um, both for committees and commissions and thinking about what it might take to do it for. Um, town meeting was a worthwhile pursuit, that there was just enough underlying interest that we should. Um, not just sort of fall into this and potentially fall out of it when life, you know, mercifully goes back to normal. And what I am hoping to share, let's see here, um, is just some of the results. Oh, there you get my email. Fascinating. Um, some of the results from the survey that we did right after the June meeting, and I'm not gonna focus on the like, technical stuff that could have been better. Um, there was a lot of interest though, in that survey and then I would say probably more in keeping a virtual um. Modality going forward. And what we ended up seeing, let's see, sorry, uh. Was, were what I ended up learning from Mike Sandman and from Sandy were a few things that. Uh, legislation validating remote participation in town meeting is gonna expire when the governor's declaration of emergency expires. There's no movement on that now, but it's gonna end. And I'll, and although there's no legislation pending, Mike reported that the enforcement below, uh, he reported the enforcement below. And if this were a path town meeting members would wanna pursue, it makes sense to follow up on this route. So. Um, this was not like a high priority to Tommy. There's plenty of other stuff going on. But Mike also pointed out that the AG's office gave permission for dial-in attendance as long as quarrels were present. Um, for committee meetings and the town council issued a similar protocol. And so Mike said it may be possible to circumvent formal legislation by attaining town council blessing for using Zoom in place of file, a dial-in. Or at least possible to have town council ask the AG, given the widespread experience that people now have had, this seems plausible. So. I guess what, you know, this is the point that. There may be value in codifying what we're already doing and making it official as an ongoing thing and not just part of an emergency. Um, and I wanted to just give you the feedback that we got on the virtual meeting in June. So I was disclaimer, I collected this in Survey Monkey. I wrote the questions with the Town Meeting Member Association. We didn't collect a lot of demographic information, just to keep it brief. I sort of regret that now. The only demographic we collected is age, so as a result, the only differences you're gonna see are by age. And just tell me, can you, is this cut off on the screen as you're seeing it, or can you see the whole slide?
Need to move it up just a little bit.
No, it's doing that.
You can't see the uh, right chart.
Okay, I'm just gonna do it this way and then it's not as pretty, but you can see it. So just. pretty, but you can see it. So just a little background on who responded. We received a sixty-three percent response rate. I did this in the three weeks, sort of right after town meeting. We only asked about age, but what you can see is the the nice curve distribution. I hadn't realized we had members between ninety and a hundred, but we do. And so that's just to say, we had a pretty broad distribution. We have a member, yeah, town meeting members as young between eighteen and thirty and up to close to a hundred, so we're very well-rounded by age. The basic analysis was that ninety-two percent of respondents reported participating in the town meeting virtually the same or more active engagement than they had in person. So that's really compelling. And it wasn't worse. Well, we did see some differences by age group. And um, we also saw when we asked about sort of factors of inclusion that made participation easier. Um, that broke down by age also, and I'll show you that in a second. And um that moving forward, a hybrid or virtual slash, a hybrid virtual slash life model was ranked as the first choice among forty-seven percent of respondents. And then another chunk ranked being all virtual as the, and I'll show you that data. What I would say, like, the key theme that I got out of the data was that it truly fostered inclusion in ways that we'd never particularly measured or or had people report on. But that there really were differences by age, and that one synthesis would be if we were to have permanent validating legislation, we'd need to enable um all town meetings members to feel equally comfortable. And I know we're not talking exclusively about town meeting, but that's who we surveyed. That's what I'm talking about. Um, here you can see the overall ninety-two percent of respondents said that they had the same or more level of engagement. And you can see also, if you stratify that by age, it's sort of the younger people were the more, the more of them said that they were more engaged than being live. And that sort of declines. But overall, it, there isn't really any evidence that this was worse. Which is important to know. When we looked at factors influencing what made it better, we sort of said, since you said you participated more, what were the factors that led to that? Um, we, I I I sort of broke these down in terms of categories, inclusion, logistical, content, finance, national climate. And I'll show you what those categories were. But on average, res- respondents selected like three factors that contributed to participation. People between eighteen and fifty actually had four factors. People between fifty and seventy had two point six, and older people had fewer factors that influenced why this was easier. And what that really meant was that um hang on, I think I have this here. Uh, the factors were, inclusion factors were convenience of not having to seek childcare or leave other family responsibilities. Logistic factors were things like leaving home, parking, not having to drive late at night. Uh, meetings ending earlier, and then the content and finance, you can see those. So inclusion, although there were only two factor, two sort of drivers, those were huge. That's that um sort of big gray area, and that's really, really, I think that's what that is, uh, really, I think, important. I'm sorry, it's these. So thirty-two percent of people under fifty felt like they were able to come because of this in ways that they might not otherwise have. Um, when we asked about future options, it was interesting to see that if we asked exclusively live as soon as it's safe, the older people were, the more they wanted that. The younger they were, the less they wanted it to be exclusively live. Here, the hybrid forty-seven percent wanted that. And um it's actually not that huge a range between the youngest and the oldest. About half people overall wanted to see the possibility of at least being able to be virtual, even if they could also be live, and they just moved a little circle. And then exclusively virtual indefinitely, some younger people thought that was good, and the older you were, the less you thought that was a good idea. And I am now in this bucket, and I was in the less good idea bucket. So finally, I just wanna share some comments that I found really interesting. Among a hundred five comments most related to access created by hybrid and virtual models, the benefit of a lifetime. So forty percent of comments supported factors of inclusion. Um, and you can read some of those comments here. I think even after COVID, we should have an alternate live days and virtual days. That way we get the benefit in-person relationships, the advantages of virtual. Um, people, some people miss the live format. But the fact of those inclusion factors is so strong that it's not like, you know, balancing sides on a scale. There's no counterbalance to saying it's more inclusive. You know, the baseline of less inclusive is not uh the place where we wanna land. Um. And I will comment, though, that forty-two percent of comments from people over seventy supported an exclusively in-person format. And I think when I talk about concerns, I would think our biggest concern is making sure that we don't come up with something that ends up feeling divisive by age rather than inclusive by other factors. But I I think our intention, and Kate can speak to this too, is just sort of how do we formalize this? How do we make sure we're creating something that sustains and recognizes what we learned, like we sort of felt intuitively and now can see numerically. So that's all I have. Thanks. And it's happy to answer questions.
It sounds good.
Um, so I I just wanna say a a couple of things. Um, one, we've got like fifteen interviews after this, so I'm hoping that we can keep this, you know, fairly short. Um, I'll go back to Bernard's uh question kind of in the beginning, which is if this isn't codified in state law, then what is the ask tonight? Cause I I think this board is very um, supportive of everything that's presented here. You didn't really have to convince us of the why. Um, that's why we were doing a pilot to try to record as many of our commission and board um, meetings and make those available. Uh, so what exactly is the ask that is within the town's control?
I, can I, I would, I actually, this is the part of our presentation that I was gonna address, and I, so I'm, I'm happy you asked. And Jennifer, is it okay if I go ahead and talk about that? So I think one of the things, uh, Kate Solbott, town meeting member, precinct one, female pronouns, um, I um uh, I I think that every organization is going to have to evaluate what they're gonna do going forward, now that we've all had the experience we've had with with hybrid um uh, meetings. And I think um, as a government board, obviously, accessibility is a higher priority for us. Um, at the same time, if it's accessibility is the reason, there's a very good reason for all all of our boards and commissions to have a uniform standard. So it's, it would be difficult for somebody who has a casual relationship with the Brookline government, nobody on this call to come to one meeting under one set of rules casually adopted by that board for remote participation, and then find that they planned a month later to go to a different meeting by a different board and assumed the same rules applied. So I could go on about that, but in the interest of time, um, Heather, I hope that's clear that whatever the the approach is that we should adopt for and for accessibility purposes and for transparency purposes and for participation purposes, it should be super legible to everybody and uniform across boards. And then I think the other, so so that's one reason why we would like you to appoint a committee to look at and propose a set of best practices. And then the other thing is, there actually are a bunch of questions beyond what we are doing here, where everyone's remote because of COVID. So imagine we're no longer remote because of COVID. And you have a very hot issue before something like select board or school committee, and none of the members are in the room, but the public's in the room. Or do you need a quorum of the members in the room? And then it doesn't matter whether the public's there. You know, we, there are gonna be a bunch of questions like that that need to be figured out. Do we need a quorum of a board so that there is live face-to-face interaction? For some people, or are we fully remote? And I think that's something, that those kinds of issues, uh, accessibility, space issues um, are gonna be important to look at, and not all boards are town meeting. Then the final, the the last thing I was gonna say, um, uh, before we uh go to Dr. Fernandez is that um, I had a conversation um, with Yvonne Spicer, who's the first mayor of Framingham, about the transition away from town meeting. And she, one of the things she said was that a lot of people experienced loneliness of missing the face-to-face contact they had gotten out of town meeting, which is a benefit of town meeting, although it's not a government function of town meeting. It's not a it's not a public-facing function, it's just a benefit. And I think that Jennifer's survey did produce some of that, and I just wanna make sure that we have some study of the difference between this is necessary for the public function and this is necessary for the enrichment of people who participate in town meeting, then figure out what those those are. But I I really would advocate strongly for a uniform approach across boards. And that's why I think we need someone to study it. Sorry, Dr. Fernandez.
Thank you, thank you both. Uh, I fully on board with with what what Heather was saying earlier. I do, I do wanna say, you know, it seems to me that um that town meeting uh is separate and apart from, from, from our oversight as a select board and the the process by which, I think very successfully, town meeting went virtual um twice now. Uh, there was a, there was a moderator's committee that worked on that issue. I think they did a great job on it, and I imagine um, if folks want to see something like that continue, either in a fully remote or a hybrid format, then then a moderator's committee should be created to study that in particular, which is very different than the rest of our boards, committees, and commissions and how they operate. Um, there already is, uh, you know, a provision that allows us on occasion to call in, and I guess we could video in uh, for a meeting if we're out of town or otherwise unavailable for a meeting. I don't I don't know that I would support um one or two board members, even if they were in the minority, they, they, even if we could still have a quorum of the board that just said, never mind, I'm never showing up, I'm just gonna do this from home. Uh, because they wanted to, unless there was some sort of medical reason why they literally could not be in person. Um, you know, otherwise, I I don't think that that would be a good way to operate any board. Um, the the difficulty comes, of course, in the hybrid format. Um, as we saw early on, before we went fully remote, the difficulties of of having a meeting in person with in per, uh, you know, um, remote um, sort of commentary and and things like that. I I do think that that we'd be wise to study that, to figure out what it might look like when we are back in person and to provide for people to um, to participate remotely, for the members of the public, I should be specific, to participate remotely. Um, the understanding that we have to have is not every room is set up like the select board's hearing room. That has microphones at every table and, uh, you know, there's cameras on us, and that that room is really, I think, well set up for even a hybrid meeting. We just gotta figure out how to make it work right. Um, but many of the places where our boards and commissions and committees meet are just rooms with chairs and tables. Uh, and so there would be a real, um, I think tech now, technology challenge. Maybe we're willing to invest the money to make it happen. Um, but I think we'd need to know exactly, you know, how we can make that happen, what it would take and how much it would cost. So, so that, you know, that I think certainly indicates that maybe we should look into it. I don't know that a, that a committee is always the right answer, and I I know um, Chair Green agrees with this, that maybe there's a way to get a working group together or something like that, but I don't know that we always need to to create a a committee to study something in particular. There might be some other way to do it.
Yeah, I I would suggest that uh maybe one uh select board member, or maybe two select board members work with uh Ms. Fields on uh coming up with a uh policy uh that we would uh distribute uh for the select board and boards and commissions that we have some uh control, control over. And then I suggest that you um, um, suggest to the moderator that he set up some type of mechanism to look at the issues that town meeting faces, which are different from me, the issues that we face. Uh, for example, Mr. Fernandez mentioned uh our current authority uh given by the uh interpretation of the Attorney General to have uh call-ins, uh, some people calling in to our meetings. Um, so long as there's a a quorum available in person. Now, you know, that that works for us. Um. You know, I I I don't really have a problem with someone occasionally calling in uh to our meeting. Uh, but that that's uh a little different for town meeting where a quorum is a couple hundred people. Uh, or whatever the number is. Uh, but there should be a workaround there too, but it's not something that, uh, you know, we have any authority over. So yeah, unless, yeah, I I propose that the select board, um, you know, uh get two volunteers to to work with uh Ms. Fields to come up with a policy for us. And that you um, uh, approach the moderator with respect to town meeting, which is a completely different animal. Does that make sense to other people?
I think, um, just, oh, am I off mute? Just to weigh in, uh, thank you so much, and I I I absolutely see that town meeting is completely different from the commissions and committees. Um, though I do think if we establish a best practice, it gives us some you know, some platform to build on if we wanna make a stronger case for some hybrid of town meeting in the future. And I guess what I'm seeing in my work, and I'm sure many other people are too, is you can't put the genie back in the bottle, like, th- this works well for a lot of people for a lot of reasons. So I'm so surprised. I'm surprised, Dr. Fernandez, that you're saying, like, if someone has a medical reason, maybe they don't come. If somebody can't get a babysitter, that's a good reason too. You know, and who's the arbiter of like, what's a good enough medical reason?
I, I know, I think you missed my point. My point was that our current policy is if somebody can't get a babysitter, they can call in to a meeting. That's our current policy. Um, what I was suggesting is that um, that I wouldn't be supportive of someone not ever, that's on a board, not ever attending that meeting in person, if that board meets in person, unless they have a medical reason why they couldn't attend meetings in person.
So, uh, Dr. Fernandez, I I'm, I'm hoping you'll keep an open mind on that, that point you're making. I understood the point you're making, and I I'm hope you'll keep an open mind on it, because one of the goals, I feel like we've tried, we've been trying to work towards as a town, is inviting people into participating in government, not just as citizens who are coming to talk to boards, but actually sitting on these boards. And so I think, you know, so I think, w- to keep an open mind about the idea that there might be people who by and large need to be at home, because there's, you know, they've got toddlers or babies, and they're not coming out once a week to a board, but they actually could participate in school committee or, you know.
I'm not understanding what what what's different from what um, Ms. Fernandez is saying.
Just that you, I I would, I would support, I mean, I think, you know, it should be study whether a person could be on a committee and never participate uh in person. I think, I think that that's, that's something that would improve the accessibility of our boards.
Okay. Um, let's see, someone else had their hand up, Mr. Quackner.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I I wanna say that I think we all on staff uh see what the genie is out of the bottle, and you know, it's not a bad, not a bad thing. It creates a lot of uh uh, more participation in our government. I I think the one thing I wanna clarify, though, is that uh what Bernard started with first is that the state legislature controls how cities and towns operate public meetings under the open meeting law. This, this Attorney General thing, well, she was compelled to issue regulations, cause the legislature passed a law that allowed limited remote participation by these boards. So it's not like the Attorney General was making this stuff up. That, that she was authorized by law or required by law to allow the change in the open meeting law. So there will not be, um, you know, we can't do anything unless we submit special legislation about that part of the uh, of of what we're talking about. Uh, in terms of, you know, making sure meetings are televised or streamed and that there's some uh ability for people to participate, certainly to attend, potentially participate remotely is something that I think we are uh absolutely interested in pursuing.
Um, Ms. Thor.
Sorry, I know we, um, I know we need to wrap up this topic. Um, and it may be that the the notion of committee was sort of overshooting, and perhaps working group would have been the more appropriate ask, um, or even, you know, some formal way of keeping it on your radar. But I think that this discussion tonight here about this is exactly what I think I envisioned a working group or committee would have, the opportunity to hash out these issues. Is it okay to come never? Is it okay to come seventy-five percent of the time? The idea that this would open up um the opportunity for applicants to boards and commissions who might not otherwise ever apply, candidates who might not otherwise ever run. Um, what would it cost? What would the technology be? There's a lot to hash out, and it would be a shame um, for everybody to sort of know intuitively that this is a great direction and then have it kind of um wither on the vine because it's not brought together and there's not a cohesive effort. So that's really kind of, I just sort of see this as everybody's chattering about this. Why not have a formal centralized conversation? If there's legislation that has to happen, legislative effort, what is it? Who does it? Let's do it. Let's be on the vanguard of this and not look at all our neighbors in a year and see them doing it um and ourselves in the same place. So perhaps committee was was overshooting, but
Okay.
Um.
Good, right, got it. So uh are there board members who would be interested in uh pursuing this? And and I see it as uh, you know, th- thinking about, you know, what the issues are and what we want to do and talking with uh Ms. Fields regarding the technology that we currently have to to actually do this, and then coming up with a written policy. Um, and I think our policies ought to be in some uh location where we can go back and refer to them. I think I mentioned I mentioned in the past that we have a policy on uh hearings after um changes in police regulations that uh no one can find. Ms. Hamilton, yeah.
So we really do need to move on because we've got three interviews before we start interviewing library trustees at seven thirty. Um, I I am very interested in this subject area, but I can't help but think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. I'm still stuck at we don't have the authority to really do this yet. So I I think step one is working with Representative Vitolo to kind of see how realistic is it that we're even going to be able to pursue a hybrid model? And I I throw that out there and I I'm kind of saying that we're out of time. Uh, but I'm happy to talk offline so that I can kind of get, you know, more on board, but that's where I am right now.
Well, I think what Carolyn was saying is that we we need to have, we need to have our something articulated to make that ask. The legislature is going to do something. Because this is, that's what I meant when I said all organizations are going to be changed by this. By this year, all organizations are going to be changed going forward. So the legislature is going to respond, and the question is, how well articulated will we be in making that ask?
Yeah, and and what I'm saying is that there are some areas where we do have authority to to make some changes, and that that is make giving people access to listen in and even maybe even speak at our meetings. Uh, while, you know, the select board has to be, you know, in the room uh under the conditions of the open meeting law. So so, okay, so uh Ms. Hamilton has agreed to work with Ms. Fields uh on this issue. Anyone else want to work with them? Mr. Ben Skoyak, okay, so uh, we we have, we have a uh plan, and uh that's how we'll go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And by the way, you you should talk to the moderator because town meeting is way, way different.
Oh, no, we got it. We got it.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Thanks, everybody. This was great.
Okay. Next, we have some boards and commission uh commissions interviews. First, um, Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relation, uh Vishal Tamang, I think that's how you pronounce it, and um is is uh preparing for uh her interview and comes highly recommended by at least the chairman of the uh commission. Uh, could you introduce yourself and why you're particularly interested in being a member of the um the commission?
Yes, hi, hello, everyone. Uh, is my sound okay?
Um, need to talk a little louder, maybe closer to your microphone.
Okay. Uh, so my name is Vishnu Tamang. I am living at twenty-two High Street now. Um, I'm from Nepal. I'm a single mom of eight-year-old. My son goes to peers. Um, can I see my note?
Sure.
Okay. Um, and I am also a Nepali interpreter. Uh, I work part-time there, and I am attending um business associate uh now in Southern Hamstar College uh to build my business and leadership skills. Uh, I have completed my bachelor's degree in education from Nepal, and I was a teacher there before I moved to US. Actually, I moved to US in two thousand nine, and I'm a US citizen now. Um, currently, I'm involved with a a nonprofit organization in Brookline called Women Thriving, Inc., um, so which serves uh low-income women in the uh Brookline, and I am a community outreach and and leadership corp, as well as I'm in the board member. Uh, thank you. And then, so I chose to, um, I feel I should apply to the diversity and inclusion uh because I am an immigrant, and especially during this lockdown, uh, people who didn't have language, didn't have English as a first language, mostly the immigrant population, they went more difficult life, uh, but everyone, but I'm not separating other, but uh and uh with having my the skills that um I'm working at in uh Women Thriving right now, that I'm community outreach. Um, so I'm I'm an Asian, as well as I am leading the Asian group in that um organization. Um, Asian company. So today they started Nepali, I mean, the English class for the Asian moms only. And um being the interpreter, I have felt I developed some listening, good listening skills and my um uh these skills, um, I think I am capable to apply to the commission.
Okay. Uh, questions from the select board? Ms. Hamilton.
Hi, um, how did you find out about this uh this board and commission and that there was a vacancy available?
Uh, actually, and then John Lenkard has emailed me, and has, I think I found the flyer. Now, in that email, I found somewhere, I think, uh, not not then, like, um, Catherine Star had posted on the women board on the email somewhere, so I feel it's diversity and inclusion, and I'm one of the diverse person in the citizen, in the city, I can say, and I say, um, if um this, the position looks like similar that I'm doing now, and this would be the good fit that um I can be one of the person they can see as them, as a representative, who look like them or not all Asian look like them, by the way. So and I will be, you know, make you feel comfortable to share your, how I need your problems and issues. So I felt I can be a good contact to them and then to bring those issues to the commission and maybe work together and come out with a certain plans to help those people. I think I went too far.
So, I I have a question.
Here.
So what, I'm sorry, Ms. Howard.
So I'm curious, I mean, I I would gather that when you were teaching um in your home, that you didn't uh your home country, that you didn't uh face the kind of problems we're facing now with COVID. But before COVID, I think your your child was enrolled at peers, and I'm just wondering what the kinds of differences were um between the educational system in um in your home countries versus uh here in Massachusetts.
Uh, the education system is completely different. Here is a semester system. Uh, we have a, we have to go whole year to complete our school. Um, and then we have a two-month-long vacation in the summertime because I'm from the hot, lowland area. Um, and then, I mean, it happens to the throughout the nation, and so same, there is no federal, we have a one uh main education system that goes all around the nation. So we have to attend whole twelve-year to complete one year, whatever grade you are.
Oh.
And it's, yeah, and we carry a lot of books. Uh, I didn't see the kids carrying books here. I was very, very curious, and uh there was nothing to sit and read with him on my hand or put in a bag. And I asked the teacher, the kid doesn't get book until they are, I think, um, middle school or on the seventh or eighth grade, so I was a little shocked that time.
That shocks me too.
Yeah, is that a matter of funding?
Um, no, uh, what do you mean funding? So the school, we all have to buy kids uh the books in Nepal uh depending on their grade level, and that is not happening here. And I I I found out that uh the teachers don't believe in one person's idea. That's why they bring all kind of books, all people's books, and they bring out the good ideas. So that was, I think, something weird.
They mimeograph a lot of materials and spread them.
Yeah, and we don't, we didn't have that in Nepal.
Okay. Uh, let me, let me ask one uh quick question. Um, and that is uh my understanding, and and look, my uh understanding of the world, both geography as well as um uh peoples of the world is very limited. Um, probably more so than most people in America, but still, I consider it limited. But I understand that Nepal has a variety of um of ethnicities. Um, I'm wondering if, and is that, that's, is that true?
Yes, yes, uh, we have some people look like me. Uh, uh, if I cut my hair front and they see me as a Chinese, and some others see me Spanish. Uh, and some people look like Indian. We have a hundred and ninety-two and more language uh dialect people there. I don't speak Nepali. It's not my first language. My first language is my last name Tamang.
Yes. Okay, well, my my quest, my question has to do with, uh, how do you see your experience uh among a multi-ethnic uh community in Nepal as uh giving you some insight into the um uh multi-ethnic issues uh that we face here in Brookline?
I I actually felt
What can you tell us? What can you teach us?
The one I can bring Nepali language, definitely. Um, the other is, uh, I feel it's a similar experience that I have in Nepal because English is here, a main language, um, and official government. Uh, the same in Nepal as well, um, being second language, and then the the struggle and the uh learning process is same over there and here as well. Uh, so seeing other people, um, the need and the people in low, Nepal is still underdeveloped, I can say, and then to the people who are reached out to the main policymaker or leaders, it was difficult as well. Here, I found that uh the languages are the other thing that um there separates people from reaching out to the um leaders or governments um to get help. So one thing I can and if I came to the board will be uh creating a uh the language access program is the first thing that I see um for as a Asian community, as well as um now where I I live in, so I can represent other uh the people of other background, financial or other um like I'm serving, helping the women community um from the Women Thriving. So that creates, I'm serving, I can have creative programs for women to support low-income women of um all languages or all all ethnic backgrounds, uh religious, and uh the low income is another part that I can work on.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll probably be voting uh next meeting or so on um appointments to the uh commission, and we thank you for appearing before us for the interview.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me here.
Thanks.
So I'm signing out from the meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
And you can stay around and listen, but okay, next, uh, we're gonna uh have uh two interviews uh for uh individuals for the Conservation Commission. Um, I see that Marion Lazar is here already, so let's um listen to her. So, uh, please introduce yourself and and why you want to be appointed to the Conservation Commission.
I've served on this commission in one capacity or another for the last thirty years, I think. Um, I was a commissioner, and now I'm an associate commissioner. Uh, my interests haven't changed. I'm still committed to the issues that the Conservation Commission deals with and to the open spaces in Brooklyn. Um.
Yeah, I I I apologize for saying why you want to be appointed to the commission. Um, you've been on the commission, but uh anyway.
I'm sorry, I would like to continue to be an associate commissioner and help out with what, as I can, to the work of the commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Hopefully, this will be a straightforward question. What are some of the um I guess, trade-offs uh that you see for the work of the Conservation Commission? What what are, what are the two things that you're kind of having to evaluate?
I'm not sure that's so straightforward. Um, the commission um deals with the regulations that protect the wetlands in this town. Um, but as such, it's often a compromise. Um, we have to develop, we have to grow, and at the same time, we have to protect what we have. Um, I think that's that.
You did a pretty good job summing it up.
Yeah, you know.
Ms. Howard, did you hand up?
I did. Did you just call on me? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay. Um, so Marion, I'm I'm curious, um, what the differences were between your uh role as commissioner and your role as associate? Um, I, yeah, most of our boards don't have that kind of situation, so I'm just wondering uh what 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 the differences in the role and how you see that.
I I gave up my position as a full commissioner when I felt that um I didn't have the time to be at every meeting, and I was traveling, and so I was away. I mean, maybe this discussion about remote participation would change something. Um, as an associate commissioner, the difference is that I do not vote on issues. Um, I'm free to uh give my opinion. I don't, I take part in all the conversation that goes on around an issue. Um, but I do not vote because the Conservation Commission has had associate commissioners before, and they come, you know, and some have become full commissioners, and some, like myself, have remained as an associate currently.
And votes of the commission.
Has that made a difference in 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 terms of, are there a lot of um close votes on the?
No. I mean, the commission is usually quite um unanimous uh in their decisions.
So, any other questions? That was the question I wanted to ask, but uh
I wouldn't be a tiebreaker.
Yeah, that's that, that was, you know, my question. I mean, it's it's good that you you tend to have unanimous um agreement, um, meaning that uh there there, you know, the the issues are clearly stated, and people can buy into what is the most rational um response.
I think the issues are are clear and the regulations are clear, and uh that leads to unanimity.
Yeah, good. Any other questions? Ms. Mr. Brian Skoyak.
Um, I'll be quick. Um, I I just want to say thirty years is is an extraordinary amount of time to give to this very important cause in Brookline, uh, cause of conservation, wetlands protection and more. Uh, and so, Marion, thank you very much. It's uh, it's great to have people like you um doing the volunteer work that you do for the town, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's it's great to have someone who can bring to the commission as an, as any board, um, sort of historical knowledge of uh of things, you know. Um, you know, how 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 issues developed, how uh practices uh developed so that uh we can make a decision as to whether we can make a decision as to whether to stay stuck in a practice or, or move on. Uh, so that, that's very important. Um, okay, unless there are any other questions, I'd, I'd like to move on. And, uh, like, like I always say, we're gonna be voting on, uh, membership on our boards and commissions at a later meeting. And, uh, we'll, uh, let you know at that point.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next, I believe, is, um, um, Mr. Loey, Mr. Loey?
Uh, Chair Green, fortunately, I don't see, uh, him here in the attendee list at this time. I have sent an email, uh, to see if he'll be able to join us later in the meeting, but I think it might be wise just to move on to the next item, and then if he does come, we can always circle back.
Right, okay.
I can also send him a text. I'll do that right now.
So now we move on to our, uh, joint meeting with the library trustees. Fun, fun, fun. We have, uh, thirteen or now twelve, um, candidates for the, uh, library board. And we're gonna interview every single one of them. Uh, I understand that the library board has already asked their questions. So, uh, you know, we're gonna be able to dominate this discussion. And, uh, let's see, how are we doing? Ms. Ms. Hamilton?
So I, I propose that we really keep the time limit to five minutes per candidate. And in order to do that, I think no more than two questions per candidate. And we can kind of either rotate or, you know, just raise our hand. Um, we, we're all pretty respectful of each other.
Yeah.
So I think that's how we should handle it, to try to get through, uh, that, that many interviews.
Right. And each candidate will have a two-minute introductory, uh, statement that, uh, should help us identify appropriate questions, uh, along with, you know, their resume and other things. And, uh, keep, keep this focused, so. So, um, so, uh, who's in charge of, uh, bringing the, uh, candidates, uh, forward? Is that gonna be, uh, Chris, is that gonna be you? James, James?
I think if it's a high-scelled board member, Green, um, Chair, uh, I think Devin, um, were you going to just promote each candidate as a panelist by alphabetical order? Do you still have that list or?
Yes, yep. So the first candidate has already been promoted. I just wasn't sure if there was going to be an introduction of the library trustees or, uh, announcement of the joint convention, but we are, we're ready to go.
Great, and I will turn it over to Chair Green and, and, and Chair Hamilton and Vice Chair Hamilton. You guys can do everything, y'all can handle.
Okay, so I guess, you know, let's, let's go through some formalities. This is a joint meeting of the, uh, Brookline Select Board and the Brookline Library Trustees Board, uh, to, uh, select, uh, replacements, uh, for two board, two trustees who have, uh, resigned from the board. Um, and we have a, uh, list of twelve, uh, candidates for replay, for those two positions. And we'll hear from each one of them in, 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 I guess, alphabetical order. Um, they're gonna make a two-minute presentation and then we'll ask questions. So, uh, first candidate, uh, is, uh, Devin, who's the first candidate? You, you just told me it.
No, that's okay. The first candidate is Anu Advani. Thanks so much for joining us. You've been promoted as a panelist. And your two minutes will begin when you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. My name is Anu Advani, and I've been a Brookline resident for more than thirty years and a registered voter. Brookline Public Schools paid for my master's degree in School Library Science from Simmons. I've always thought I'd be a librarian, but ended up as an elementary math specialist at the Lawrence School in Brookline. Books are my first love and libraries too. So I decided to start a math library at the Lawrence School. Year one, there were eighty books, board games and manipulatives. Ten years later, when I left in twenty nineteen, there were eight hundred and thirty-one items in the Math Resource Center. And the parents decided to put up a plaque and name it after me. The library served pre-K to adults and was aligned to the school curriculum. Parents, teachers and math specialists across Brookline borrowed games and manipulatives. Funding was through parent teacher organization grants, TADAF, Brookline Education Foundation grants and parent donations. I run math game evenings at the Coolidge Corner Public Library with board games from the Lawrence Math Resource Center. I'm not much of a talker, I'm a doer. I see a need and I work with others to get the need addressed. I'm a board member of Hospitality Homes, a Brookline nonprofit that houses patients and their families when they come to Boston for medical treatment in host homes. In twenty nineteen, ninety-five percent of our host homes went offline, including my condo. Um, I'm a host too. I have been one for ten years. The pandemic caused us to rethink our model. Ronald McDonald and the Hope Lodge shut down. Hospitality Homes pivoted to providing housing in Airbnbs and hotels. I negotiated a rental deal and I'm the host for Walnut Street condo in Brookline. Currently, we're housing a family from Hawaii. Being a host is humbling and gratifying. I've raised two sons in Brookline and I'm very familiar with the Brookline Public Schools and the public libraries. One of the strengths that I could provide is a stronger bond between the two that is focused on the curriculum. Post-pandemic, I feel that libraries will play a central part as social gathering and healing places for our children. In summary, I would listen well, work hard and figure out how best to support and grow our libraries and librarians. A library holds books, but it is the librarian who is the soul of any library, and I've trained the two of the very best. Rusty Browder, who ran the children's bookshop, and Iris Feldman, who the Lawrence School Library is named after. With a name like Anu Advani, I'm usually at the head of the line. So I'll stop here as you have a baker's dozen of candidates to go through. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So I would like to start off with a questioning from the board. Mr. Ben Skoye.
Thank you. Thank, thank you so much, Anu. Um, and I, I, I just want to say, um, I hope people listen carefully to the part about hospitality homes. Um, there's been a little bit of personal experience, uh, in our home with that organization and we're crushed. Um, we can't provide currently during COVID, but Brookline people who don't know about it should learn more about it. I also want to say that anyone listening to Anu at home, um, and sort of contemplating the fact that there's eleven more to come is probably saying, is it possible that there's another eleven people that are as qualified as this person? And, uh, uh, it's an extraordinary, extraordinary group that we're facing here. And, um, this is just the beginning of, you're gonna meet tonight, um, twelve very extraordinary people. And Anu, you're, you're the first, um, of, of several, and it's a pleasure that we heard from you and that, uh, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a privilege that Brookline has attracted your willingness to volunteer. Um, and thank you.
Any other questions? Um, let's see, I, I had a question, but I'm not. I guess I'd like to learn more about, uh, your, um, math resources, uh, program at, at Lawrence Schools and how, um, you know, you, you can, you know, use that as, uh, something, as a resource, uh, in our, uh, general public libraries and how you would do that.
So when I was doing my degree at Simmons, um, my practical experience was in school libraries. And, um, I'd already been hired as a math specialist when I was volunteering in the Lawrence School Library. And so I tried to combine the two areas. I researched what math books were in the library currently, and I researched it at the Lawrence School Library, the Runkle School Library and Devotion and at Driscoll. Um, there was only a handful of math books that, um, you know, uh, followed the curriculum, the elementary school curriculum. So I researched and recommended books and, um, then worked very closely with Rusty Browder. And when I left, there were three hundred books that followed the curriculum. And I actually have a list of books that are good for kindergarten that follow the curriculum that would be useful to any public library or any school library to have. Also, board games are huge to engage kids with. And, um, I have a spreadsheet with, you know, two hundred board games that are aligned by grade level and, um, curriculum that I can share with any librarian in Brookline or anywhere, actually. I don't mind sharing with anyone. I've done it internationally. Um, and, you know, working closely with librarians to, uh, enhance the collection and, um, engage the, um, the people who come to the library.
Thank you. Let's see, hey, Devin tells me we're at five minutes, which was about three minutes ago. So, thank you. Um, let's move on to the next applicant.
I think that is I.
Pardon me?
I said, I think that is I, the next candidate. My name is. My name is. Maroti, um, I am, I've lived in, uh, Brookline only for the last eighteen months, but I am a retired college teacher and dean. I want to be, have this position because I, as I said in my original interview, I think libraries are fundamental to democracy. And, um, any work I can do with a library will make me feel that I'm participating even more in, in my democracy. Um, I got my first library card at five years old and my first job at fourteen was working at the Brooklyn Public Library in Brooklyn, New York, for making out library cards for five-year-olds who were first getting their cards. So I've been connected to libraries very, a very long time. But one of my daughters is a librarian. She also got her degree from Simmons. And I suppose if my life had gone differently, librarian work would have been what I did. Um, I think I can bring to this job, um, discipline, um, sense of responsibility, a good sense of humor. I have served on town boards in Connecticut where I lived for the last, uh, five decades, uh, and on many college committees, so I'm pretty unflappable and I'm pretty able to work with other people. I, um, I'm a quick learner and, um, and I'm very curious. So I, I'm open to learning about what, how make the library better. The first thing I did when I moved to Brookline actually was to go to the Coolidge Corner Library, get my library card and volunteer to run a mystery book group, which I do once a month with, uh, Britta Ziden, who is the, one of the librarians there. And I've done that sort of thing in Connecticut where I lived. I, I, for many years, did public, uh, book discussions for the public library and, um, worked with them in any way I could. So, um, those, you've got, I think you have my resume and it tells about my experience, but I'm open to any questions you may have. And thank you for the opportunity, uh, to possibly join the board.
Thank you. So, any questions from the select board? Ms. Hamilton?
So I, I heard a, a term used maybe a year or two ago that libraries have really become our community centers. What has your experience been like, um, especially being new in town? And how do you think the library, the library trustees can help facilitate that?
Well, I did ask when I was in the original, um, interview with the trustees about how the trustees interact with librarians. I'm, I'm not there now because of COVID, but I was in the library several times a week. And in terms of the community center, I was very impressed with the Brookline Public Library. I joined a group with conversational Italian when I first got here. We, it's done remotely now. As I said, I'm in the book group. I noticed the number of activities for, um, people in the community, English as a second language opportunities, uh, discussion groups, uh, young parents group. So I think there are many things that the library is already doing, not only at Coolidge Corner, but at the other branches as well. And it seems to me that one of the things that the trustees can do is, is spend time in the libraries, getting to know how the libraries work and finding out from the librarians the kinds of things that are necessary. I mean, librarians are supported, libraries are supported by town funds, but there may be, uh, and I do have to say, I have been very, very impressed by the way the library has operated during the pandemic, um, in enabling people to still pick up books. There are signs outside, um, the Coolidge Corner branch that you can do Wi-Fi outside. So that for people who, who need that connection, you know, being able to, they need computers, obviously. But, um, I mean, they even loan out baking pans. Um, and, uh, during COVID, they've been loaning out, um, projects for kids to, young children to do. So I think that the trustees can help, first of all, by being present. I, I don't know if there are any kinds of strictures on what a trustee can say. But certainly, it's, when budgets are up, can be supporting the budget to make sure the library is supported in the way that it needs to be supported. And to get to know what happens in the library, to find out ways in which we can specifically aid the librarians. Um, you know, again, I've been very impressed by what happens right now. Um, I don't know what kinds of improvements need to be made, if any, but certainly getting to know what's going on would help to make those decisions.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. Heller? You're unmuted.
Sorry about that. Um, I'm curious, uh, I, I don't want to be intrusive, but I'm very curious as to why you would leave someplace that you would live for many, many years and move here.
Um, my husband died two years ago. I lived in a very big house in the woods. I'm really a city girl at heart. I grew up in New York City. I was so happy to find sidewalks again. And we had both decided that when we retired, we would be moving. My daughter lives in, one of my daughters lives in Brighton. So we decided we would move to, to Massachusetts anyway. And Brookline just has everything that, um, you know, in a, in a lot of ways, it seems to me, it's got all the advantages of a small town, but the advantages of a small city as well. Uh, being able to just walk down the street and see lots of people, uh, window shop, go into the Coolidge Corner, uh, the theater, um, the bookstore, uh, are all things that satisfy my city girl heart to a degree I cannot even begin to tell you. Um, and COVID cut short some of that exploration, but I have been doing a lot of walking around and getting, finding halls. Pond Sanctuary was wonderful and exciting. So, yeah, that, that was why I moved and I'm very glad I did.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, let's move on to the next. Okay. Um, let's see, next is Tracy Chin.
Good evening, everyone. Do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Great. Hi, this is Tracy Chin. My register's name is, uh, Chu Min Chin. Probably some of the, uh, town members that cannot find my name. And good evening. I was born and grew up in a small rural village in Taiwan where education and cultural resources were very scarce. Investing long hours in libraries, I actually became the first child and woman to receive a college education in my family. And this background motivates me to have a big dream to create positive social and educational impact. And it's a blessing that I, I can call Book Night my second hometown, where I have lived longer than my one in Taiwan. My first job in the United States was the Book Night Access Television and currently it's named Book Night Interactive Group. During those eight years of service, one project left a distinct imprint, was the Book Night Reads for Book Night Public Libraries and the Library Music Association. Until today, I still remember vividly the Honeymoon Hall was for people standing in the back and also in the hallway. And in the recent three years, as the board member of Book Night Chinese School, gave me a deeper understanding of the diverse cultural and needs. In twenty nineteen, with gracious support from the libraries, the Chinese school was able to launch and co-host the first Chinese recitation and penmanship contest at the Coolidge Corner Library. In the same year, I also, uh, co-co wrote the first grant and we received the first grant from the Book Night Community Foundation to create after-school program. And then we built a partnership with Book Night Booksmith and also local organizations. With these popular programs, we plan to expand the diversity for broader participation and collaborate for future programs. With the increasing diversity in Book Night, I would like to advocate for Book Night Public Libraries with the new role as the community conduit for cross-cultural and education. If I am chosen to serve, I would utilize my experiences in education and nonprofit sectors and digital marketing partnership skills and my Asian-American ethnicity to broaden diversity in education content and foster inclusion in Book Night community. And I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity tonight and thank you for your support.
Thank you. So, any questions from the select board? Ms. Heller?
Oh, you have a, you have a, uh, interesting background, um, in, uh, digital media. Oh, you have a, you have a, uh, interesting background, um, in, uh, digital media. And I would imagine that, um, you've used that to, uh, in libraries. And have you any, uh, ideas about how your skills would come, uh, would be useful to the Brookline library system?
So, uh, because of my experience at, uh, B I G, well, back then was at B I T V, I'm also happy to coach our interns and also to co-create a program that would teach the kids how to use the media to become a social advocate for any issues they would like to address. Because nowadays, the teenagers, uh, or our young adults are very active in social media. And Book Night is a very diverse and also a very, uh, big voice in social, uh, democracy and also social changes. So this is one of the, uh, skill set that I have been, I, actually, I was an adjunct faculty in some of the colleges and also, uh, back at B I T V. So I have been teaching kids how to use their skills in digital media. And also because I am a professional in digital marketing. And also, uh, I have been, uh, actually taking classes off of Harvard. So my skills in, uh, digital analytics and also digital marketing would be helpful for either Book Night Libraries or, uh, B I, uh, B I G to help the kids to grow in these skills.
Any other questions from the board? Um, let's see. I, I did have a question. I'd, I'd like to get a better sense of, um, how you, uh, um, someone born in Taiwan, um, different from China in, in many ways. But, you know, still part of, uh, Chinese community of which, um, uh, which in Brookline is about seventy, eighteen percent of the population. So I'd like to have a better sense of how you, um, you know, what, what ideas you have. Not that, you know, you, you'd have to be the expert on this, but what ideas you have for, uh, reaching out and, and, um, and incorporating or including the, um, huge, uh, Chinese community we have here in Brookline, um, in, in library activities. Actually, the eighteen percent is more Asian, um, but there's still a large Chinese, uh, community in Brookline. You, you mentioned a little bit of this, but, uh, like, like you, to elaborate a little more.
Yeah. So in Book Night, we actually have, uh, Chinese as the second language, uh, other than English as the first one. So there are, as you already mentioned, that, um, Chinese is a, a huge population in Book Night. And also we try to advocate, uh, for the language learning. And also, uh, in one of that, uh, marketing effort that I did at Book Night Day up on the, um, the hill, uh, just last year, we actually had, uh, some people that used to live in China, but they would like to relearn their Chinese language with the family. And, uh, he actually is an Indian and he just ran to the booth and told me that I would like to sign up for, for myself and also for my sons, uh, because they used to live in, in China and they don't want, uh, he doesn't, he, he doesn't want the kids to lose the language skill. So anyone who have that interest and we welcome anyone, special recalcation or any other, um, ethnicity, um, or group of, uh, people they would like to learn, then, uh, the, the school is welcome for them. And also hopefully we could collaborate with the libraries to make it more welcome, um, in different branches, especially the Coolidge Corner, uh, library is very huge, embracing different cultural and also they are hosting different festivals for different ethnicity. So this is one of the part. And also I am partnering with, uh, different governments. So I can also help to solicit different collections, uh, Chinese collections.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to our next, um, applicant. Ms. Fields, uh, next is Susan Cunningham. Is that right? It's Cunningham. She's a two-minute, uh, introduction. I think you're muted.
I'm good now, I think. Thank you. It's so nice to see everybody. And I came at the beginning of the meeting. So I am so appreciative of the people that help run this town. I'm amazed, actually, that I have not been involved. This is my first attempt at, um, putting my toes in the water. And already I'm a disaster because those three people before me are amazing. So I only have, um, uh, the, the knowledge that we're good. We're really doing well. So, um, I've lived in Brookline thirty years. I have some international experience too. I lived in New York City where I went to graduate school. I, I'm from Revere originally. And, um, I grew up with a mother who loved books so much that, and the others have heard this, in her obituary, we had to say that she was the one that took the most books out of two libraries, Chelsea and Winchester. But, um, I've lived in Italy for five years as well. So I have a very open mind about, um, others. And, um, I think that's very important today. But I don't have the skills that the others have. I just feel, um, grateful to be here in this group. I do have, I only have three master's degrees. I'm a disaster and a failure. But, um, I studied and I know the library probably from the other end as being someone who frequents the library, um, to study and to do research and to finish all my papers. But, um, my degrees are in dental hygiene. And so dental hygiene, higher education administration and theology, because I was curious. I recently did not go back to work as a hygienist because of the pandemic. So I'm basically in a forced retirement kind of situation, but there's no way I'm ready. And I have all kinds of, um, desires to keep busy and contribute to my community. I've never done that before. Um, I have many years of serving on committees. I served on two condo boards at a time. And anybody that's done that knows how very difficult that can be, but that's the microcosm of society. I'm considered nice and easy to work with. I have very strong organization skills. I live in a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot apartment in Washington Square. So I've downsized and I'm ready. And I don't think I should take up more of your time. I know that, you know, you're going to be well with this amazing accomplished group of applicants, and that's an alliteration. Um, I have a bad sense of humor, but it's always present. And, um, my refrigerator is right here because where my desk is, is where the stove used to be. So for you to remember me for next time, or if something comes up that's more appropriate, I'm going to have a limoncello and cheer on the next applicant. Thank you so much, everybody. This has been an amazing pleasure.
Okay. Any questions from the select board?
I, I'm going to yield to Nancy. She, she had her hand up.
Okay. Thank you, John. Um, so Susan, I'm very interested in your perspective. You say you've been a, essentially a consumer of the libraries, a customer of libraries.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, uh, what your experience has been? What have been the positives? What are the negatives where you think we could improve?
Oh, that's a loaded question, Nancy. I am amazed at what happens at the library. I've become friendly even with, uh, some of the librarians over time. For me, it's also like a community center, which is awesome because you see all kinds of people reading, um, just getting excited about finding things at the library, taking out a pan, as Anu said. She had the library background. Did everybody see that? The hologram behind her was the library. I can't compete with that. But, um, I'll have to go back to the library, Nancy, and, and see where there might be another fit for me because, um, I've been a very happy customer. Um, and yes, what's going on with the pandemic is awesome. You're taking it so much more serious than some other libraries. I have a boyfriend who's a librarian and they still see clients inside the building, which is not great, but at least we can still read and I'm going off my time.
Thank you. I've been in the box to, uh, to, um, speed up because we're going over, uh, a lot of time per interviewee. But, uh, we appreciate the information that you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Ms. Fields, uh, next is Emily Dolbear.
Hi. Good evening. Uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, so my name is Emily Dolbear. Thank you for the opportunity and hello to, uh, all members of both committees and all the rest of the people who are come already and coming after. This is very inspiring. So I had lived with my family on Addington Road in Brookline since two thousand and four. Uh, my children attended the Rumble School and, um, Brookline High School. And my younger son is a senior there and I'm on the PTO at the Brookline High School right now. We know and appreciate our terrific libraries and librarians, um, since, uh, love those many years. So what, what makes me a perfect candidate to join Brookline's library board? Luckily, there are two spots. Um, I have two things that might be useful to share. And perhaps like many people, um, I'm very committed to the importance of libraries. My professional life for the last twenty-five years has been devoted to acquiring, editing, proofreading, fact-checking, very important, um, and photo researching, non-fiction library books for, um, for schools and library publishers. Um, I'm also a published children's author of books for schools and public libraries specifically. Um, and I just yesterday got, um, my, uh, author copies of my latest book, published by The Child's World. So that's, that's one thing I, I know about libraries and I've been committed to them professionally. And then the second reason is, um, I've worked very hard to support innovative, um, inclusive and equitable public education in Brookline. In my volunteer life, I've served, um, for three years as a PTO president at, uh, the Rumble School. And then for the next seven years, I was a member of the Board of Directors of the Brookline Education Foundation. Um, and the last three years of that, excuse me, I served as president. So I, I'm going to give a quick shout out to the B D F, which is celebrating its fortieth birthday this year of supporting professional development and renewal of our educators through grants and programs not funded by the town, um, budget. Is going to be even more important, um, than it's ever been. For example, this past summer, we, we funded an additional, in addition to our usual, um, grant programs, we funded a hundred thousand dollars of educated, educator-driven, um, remote learning initiatives. So that, that has taken up a lot, that's my, been my biggest volunteer involvement, um, in my time in Brookline. So I think I have a pretty proven track record, um, of working collaboratively, collaboratively with diverse voices, um, asking thoughtful questions, communicating clearly, listening closely. Um, and I've been, um, pretty conscientious about, um, carrying out what I've taken on. So, um, I think the connection of, of sort of advocacy and stewardship is, is really important. And, um, and I think, um, in this role, um, you know, education and connection for all groups, all backgrounds is, um, you know, that's what Brookline libraries are all about. So, um, I think I would, uh, be an energetic advocate and also, um, give some, um, stewardship, um, that's required for the position. So thank you very much for, um, for all you do and, um, and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Dolbear. Um, questions from the select board? Mr. Van Scaya.
Emily, thank you so much for your volunteer work in addition to, uh, uh, you know, your willingness to serve on the, on the Library Trustees Board. I just want to ask you to let everybody know about the process that led you to, uh, to writing Juneteenth.
Um, it is obviously, um, what has been in a, a sort of a, a topic that's, um, from George Floyd and, um, in May, Memorial Day. It was part of a series, um, of, um, The Black American Journey. And, um, I actually did, uh, you might think that, uh, very frequently when I write these books, there, you know, Martin Luther King, there are a million biographies by Martin Luther, about Martin Luther King. But this Juneteenth is actually a topic that, um, I was able to do some original research and do some, some, get down to some documents that I found. And, uh, that was, was not what I expected because Juneteenth, um, you know, is, is something that, um, I think libraries and young readers and teachers are looking for, um, to, to find out more about. So it was, um, in that regard, uh, a really interesting project.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm told we're at five minutes already. So, um, I'd like to move on to the next, uh, applicant. Thank you, Ms. Dolbear.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So next, is it Kristen Hong? That's, that's next. Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristen. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for this opportunity. It's really nice to meet everyone. I apologize in advance. I couldn't get myself down to two minutes because as they say, if I had more time, I would have written a long, a shorter letter. I live in precinct seven by way of precincts nine and ten. I work as a mom. I have a son at Rough and Ridley and I volunteer with the PTO. I'm both feet neck deep in and I love it. I, I'm in the classrooms. I co-lead the school's Equity PAC. I am helping to start a school-wide initiative called the Rough and Ridley Readers, which builds community through the joy and power of words. Through that experience, I realized I actually wanted to become a library trustee and fortuitously there were openings. Uh, I give, I, I want to give more to my local community. I also work as a physician at Massachusetts. We call it Mass General Hospital now. It's a branding thing, but M G H. I care for patients, um, as my primary duty. I also serve on committees for quality, safety and patient experience. At the national level, I serve on a task force, uh, for equity, diversity and inclusion in my professional medical society. I also have a bachelor's in history and science from Harvard. And once upon a time, I fancied myself a writer. Evidently, I went in the other direction. But in so doing, I, I think I can now bring a more unique skill set and perspective that would strengthen the board, the library and thus our community. In my professional hat, I prioritize good communication and really listening to my patients. Um, I'm used to being very organized and efficient. I have to be, to be maximally effective. I routinely consider all the angles of an issue. I find creative solutions and I make difficult decisions in a split second. These skills or habits of you well that I've developed are things that I think I could contribute to the team. I would also bring access to a different network of community leaders, experts and perspectives on the intersection of science, health and society. And I think we all agree that the pandemic has really underscored the inextricability of these spheres. And as a library moves forward in this world, we, these connections, um, need extra support. In my personal life, I see everything through the lens of justice and equity, as you can tell from the things I've been dabbling with. I love generating ideas. I love taking action. I'm, I'm kind of a, let's get it done kind of person. I really like meetings, which, um, some have told me is unusual. And I function best as part of a team. Um, I'm all about the team around me and I can't do anything without my teams. So I would really hope to complement the people and the work, the personalities, as well as the actual work, um, ongoing by the Board of Trustees and the library staff. On a more personal note, my son, uh, who is now six, is a voracious reader. He's a library patron in his own right. He's very proud of that. And I, I thank you all for that. As a mother, it just, it, it's really special to see him really blossoming in that. I'm also the daughter of Taiwanese immigrants who in the nineteen seventies, um, came. And my mother's first job was. And my mother's first job was in the library where she was able to learn English and the ways of Americans. She learned that Sesame Street is not actually a fancy pattern on a discount Kmart blanket, but it's actually a TV show for children. I know what a library can be for a family, for a community. And, um, it's the cornerstone of a healthy and just society and I'm committed to its wellbeing and its growth. So I just close by thanking you all for allowing me to share a little bit of my story. I'm sorry that I spoke so fast, um, but I really wanted to get it all out. And it's, it's an amazing group of candidates I find myself in. I echo what prior candidates have said. I don't think you guys can go wrong with any choice, uh, myself included, hopefully. But, um, I, I mean, I just, as I'm listening to everyone, I would love to be in a book club with any of you guys. So please reach out to me if you're out there. I'm also just really touched by how all of you on this screen, um, in both of these two boards, keeps finding more ways to give of yourselves. And I, I see, um, just in the meetings and town halls, everyone's just digging deep. And even as we're being refined by fire in these unimaginable times, your leadership is just, we're really lucky. So thank you. Thank you for your dedication and work and I yield to questions.
Thank you. So questions from the select board, Mr. Fernandez?
Sure. Um, uh, thank you and thank you to all the candidates for, for your willingness to serve. I agree that we have tough choices ahead of us. Uh, I wanted to know if you can talk, um, you know, you mentioned a lot about the equity lens. If you can talk about, um, as you see it, what are some of the equity issues at, um, at libraries? Generally not necessarily Brookline libraries, but at libraries and, um, that maybe we should be paying a lot more attention to as a town. Uh,
Thank you for the question. Um, there are a lot of issues, but I think there are a lot of solutions that are actively being worked on. Language and access to language and translations, I think, is a really big thing. That's something that we on our Equity PAC worked on in the beginning. And we're seeing some changes, at least on the school district side. Having the information there, but not knowing how to access it is a really big problem for people who don't speak English or people who are illiterate. Carrying it one step further, access to people who have disabilities and who don't read with their eyes, who don't hear with their ears. And so I think all of these, I think our entire society needs to improve. And I don't think it's unique to the library as a problem, so to speak. But the library is the most equitable place in the community. And so the library is a leader, um, for, for being that example of how to provide access. When I was a new mom, I realized the only place I can get into on my own is the library because they actually have ramps, um, unlike most other places that are, are for, for the public. So that's, that would be one thing. As a, as a physician and as a, a physician who cares for women specifically, I, I think there are gender, gender identity, orientation, inequities in our society. And as a physician, I think there are a lot of racial disparities in health. And the, the social determinants of health, I think the library is the place to start addressing them. And I see that the library is doing that. I, I wanna, I wanna help expand that.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next, uh, candidate. Let's see. Thank you. Kay, Kay Babu Krishna Murphy.
Thank you, Chair Green. Can you all hear me properly?
Yes.
I apologize. Uh, uh, people tell me I'm soft spoken, though my children always tell me I'm way too loud, so apologies. Uh, it's a pleasure to meet you all this evening and I'm really grateful for this opportunity to chat with you. As many people have said, I'm gonna just take a couple of minutes to try to give you a little, glance, glimpse at my world and to see whether or not what I have to offer may be something that's of value to the library. Whether or not I am considered for this opportunity to be a trustee, as I mentioned before, my goal is, when this process is over, to call Sarah and see how she can put me to use. So, um, let me tell you a little bit about why I want to do this job. So I am, as many people are, first generation immigrant child, born to graduate students who use the library as a babysitter for me. So the public libraries are where I learned about American culture and understood that reading and digesting accurate information really was sort of the key to success in this country. So, um, when I went to engineering school and then from there to medical school, I moved into Brookline about 20 years ago with my two toddlers, husband and a newborn. Um, and to, undertook the goal of creating lifelong readers by doing both morning and evening read alouds. Thankfully, that success with that opportunity led to, I think, ongoing success for the three of them through BEEP, through Lawrence, uh, Brookline High, and now they're all in college. I am a physician by training. I work as a neurologist and as an ethicist. I spend an awful lot of my time, uh, that is not devoted to my clinical work, volunteering. I do volunteer activities that primarily are around soccer and education. Soccer, because my kids all played heavily and still play in college. And education, because, um, I couldn't imagine how the teachers did this all by themselves. I think that my primary reason for wanting to have an opportunity to serve as a library trustee is looking at where we are right now as a country. We are dealing with two intertwined pandemics, right? The obvious one, COVID. And then the, uh, perhaps equally obvious to this community, which is the sort of social, political, Trump administration, I'm gonna call it. I'm just gonna call it what I see. Um, and the sad part about all of that is that that is resulting in not only such incredible stressors on our communities and our people, um, but it has also left us unfortunately with a, uh, situation where we have greater educational divides. We've got marginalization of vulnerable citizens. We have budget shortfalls. We have a lot of challenges that I think that the public libraries can actually help to heal. So I have sort of three things that I would very much have, uh, love an opportunity to work with the trustees on. One is, um, wellness and support of the existing library staff. As we've all talked about the library being a community, well, that community needs initial support from the staff. I think that invigorating them, um, ensuring that they are treated, um, with the respect and the named respect. I know that the library community realizes that. But I think to myself about how often we turn to our librarians for any number of its assistance. Um, and I think that it would be great for the librarians to be household names, just like other members of town are. Um, I also think that, uh, learning to synergize with some existing town programs, again, particularly as we're dealing with shortages in funding, will be critical. Learning how to synergize, understand resources, working with disenfranchised communities, working within, more closely within the school system and our neighboring schools and colleges, I think will be valuable. And then finally, really acknowledging that our libraries in a way are stewards of our democracy. Libraries are where I learned to understand, um, what valid references really are. I think my kids are growing up understanding or thinking that Wikipedia is a perfectly legitimate resource to use with no appreciation of the fact that I could decide that I'm an authority on any topic and write a Wikipedia article on it, which then some poor person would actually look at and take as truth. So making sure that not only do our librarians have an opportunity to do what they do best, but that we really focus on our, particularly our disenfranchised communities and to create a safe space, a respected haven in a natural, I think, location for both the reflection and the healing, but also the community building that our twin pandemics are requiring now. I'm gonna stop now and, um, see if you have questions for me. I'm happy to expand on anything that I've already said.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions from the select board? We'd like to start off. Ms. Heller. I think you're muted.
Sorry. You have a very impressive CD and, uh, CV and I'm just, uh, wondering how much, how much, uh, I, I wasn't clear how much, um, connection you have to libraries in Brookline. So, today.
Yep. So, um, we spent most of our time, free time, that wasn't actually in school, I would say, in the library. All of our children have had library cards from a very young age. We participated in a lot of the activities that are going on in the library. I think we've utilized, uh, many of the library resources, including the museum passes, coming to the various activities that are ongoing. I have been using extensively the online resources that are available through the library. And I think that it is true that, for us at least, the library has always been, um, almost an extension of our home. One of the beauties, I think, of living in Brookline is how easy it is to physically get to a library. One of the beauties of our forward-thinking library system is that they manage the move to, um, pandemic, appropriate resources, I think, quite easily. So, um, I frequently exhaust my hoopla, uh, account on a monthly basis because that is one of the things that I would like to talk about expanding. But I think that, uh, our kids, again, growing up, were in the library all the time, both to, to work on projects, but also, um, to meet with friends and to, um, participate in some activities there. So we use them a lot. I'm lucky because I have always worked within, working, a walking distance of both my home and the library. Worked at PI Deaconess for a number of years. I work, uh, my primary, um, office right now is, uh, over in Brighton. So takes me past the Coolidge Corner Library on a regular basis. And, uh, I would say that that's probably one of the places that I wish I could actually walk into nowadays. But hopefully with vaccination coming across the line, we'll be able to go back to in-person soon.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry. Thank you. We're gonna move on and appreciate your, um, speaking with us. So, uh, next, okay. Next is Allison McAllen.
Okay. Oh, I just realized it's really dark in here. Let me just move. All right. I think that's a little better. Well, uh, thank you for your patience. You guys have been here for quite a while. I'm gonna keep this short. I'm just gonna introduce myself. I'm an attorney. I have my own practice. It's successful. I do employment litigation for, um, employee discrimination for employee side. I think what makes me good at my job is that, um, I have, can work out of two different baskets. I listen to my client. I try to understand their needs. I try to understand what's most important to them. I try to be compassionate and empathetic. And then the other bucket is advocating for them. I'm passionate. I'm zealous. I'm fierce. And I will go to bat for what I, what needs to happen and I do what needs to be done. I think that what I bring to this, would bring to this position would be, uh, I'm a well-rounded person. I, I have a good sense of humor. I'm creative. I'm funny, but I'm also fierce, firm and zealous. So, um, why I wanted to be on the board, I, I love libraries. I love learning. I'm really concerned that there's, uh, they're going to go extinct. There's a lot of people that don't use them and I want to make sure that they're still around. For my son, who's only a little over a year, um, I wanna make sure that they're here and I want to give what I can to make that happen. So I don't wanna, I know you've been here for a long time. If you have any questions, please let me know, but that's what I have to say.
Okay, questions from the board? I'll ask, okay, Mr. Fernandez?
I'll defer to you if you'd like to go.
Okay. Uh, I'll just ask, uh, as an attorney, um, what, what type of, um, what, what does that, uh, background, uh, other than the fact that, uh, you know, you, you speak well, you argue well, uh, and all the things that lawyers are supposed to do? Uh, but what, uh, sort of insights, uh, or perspective can you bring to a library trustee board, uh, from your legal background?
Well, I view the role, I'm sure that there's a lot that I don't know about and there's a, a lot of facets to it, but I believe that we are there to advocate for the libraries and librarians and what they need and to, um, to help them to get what they need. So, as I, in addition to what I've just said about my practice, my job is to assess the playing field and to determine who the key players are, what is, what the objective is and how best to accomplish that. So I, I think that's, and, and obviously I have my own practice. I'm a solo practitioner, so I do everything. I'm very hands-on. I'm very creative and I'm very resourceful. So whatever the needs are, I'm, you know, I'm good at getting things done that have to be done.
Okay, any other questions? I think we're up to the five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
For, for appearing for us. Uh, next, it looks like Matthew Shakespeare. Okay. I don't think your name is gonna get any edge.
Miss Oberis Saltz did not, is, did not show up on the thing, so I apologize for that. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, so anyway, my name is Matthew Shakespeare. Thank you all for your time. You've been here a wicked long time. I'm gonna lead with a quote. A very thoughtful and wise man once said, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, "You can get the measure of a country by the quality of its bread." Uh, he wrote this, "Living as an expatriate in France during a truncheon in the 12th to the 60s in the United States." And he was speaking about much more than the difference between a delicious crusty baguette and a weak old loaf of Wonder Bread. And what I like to respectfully co-opt his quote for is to say something like this, "Which you can get the measure of a town by the place its library takes in its civil discourse and culture." Uh, I was born here in Brookline. I went to Runkel, BHS and SWS. One of the first Gen Xers and since getting my first paper library card, I've seen our town and its people continually work to make the library have the capacity and to represent the needs, ideals and aspirations of the town. From when I was a kid, when there was a small children's room with a voracious librarian, it's expensive to have a complex, a complex that accommodates childrens, teens, young adults and their own spaces. Expansion that has, has included universal access, which is a never-ending task that moves forward. Study carols, more stack space, which was made many years ago, which when stacks go away can be used to be program space in a future time with the libraries. Places where high school kids can study together, developing collections that address the needs and desires of our various sub-communities, especially those who might not have a voice proportionate with their needs. 24-hour robust free Wi-Fi available within and without the grounds of each of the particular libraries. Vast amounts of cloud-based media in many formats, museum passes, a library of things that allows for everyone, regardless of means, use a sewing machine, play a vinyl record on a turntable or try their hand at baking. My husband and I moved back to Brookline from New York about 10 years ago. New York was just a very expensive city in which to watch Netflix and we loved Brookline and figured we might as well come back. And, you know, since then, Fritz and I have remained devoted to the library, both as power users and Brook, uh, the library is a symbol of what Brookline is and inspires to be and what it means to us. And it would be my hope, and I hope you all have seen my, my letter, my cover letter and my bona fides, my hope is to be able to assist in whatever way that I can to make the library continue to be what it has been for me for quite some time. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the select board? Mr. Van Scaya.
Matthew, if I get this wrong, please correct me. Don't be shy about embarrassing me if that's the case. But I, I'm pretty sure on social media, you're, you're known for photography and especially photography of gardens, um, and, and landscape. Is that right?
Uh, yes, yes. All right. I got it. I just wanted to thank you for that, in addition to everything else that you're bringing to this, um, uh, interest that you're showing in the library position. And, um, uh, I, I, I'm not sure that the connection is obvious to people who are listening right now,
but, um, I, I think a person who has an eye for what makes Brookline, you know, special just as a place to kind of walk around on a regular basis, is, uh, you know, that, that alone is, is an attribute that, uh, can be useful in, in terms of figuring out how to make our libraries, um, as good as they can be. Uh, and, and I just, um, I wanna make the suggestion now that if it should turn out that you're one of our library trustees, and maybe even if it turns out you aren't one of our library trustees, an exhibit of your photographs at the library would be a great idea.
Don't make me blush.
Well, we can't see you, so we wouldn't, we're blushed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We, we have a little bit of time left. Ms. Ralik? Mr. Malik?
I was gonna ask you, well, you have two items on your resume that intrigue me. One is the American Antiquarian Society in Worcester. And apparently you, that's a library with early American printed and written material. And I was wondering whether you knew that is very relevant to the Brookline libraries and how you would bring those skills to this position.
Sure, that's an excellent question. And the Antiquarian Society is, and again, I want to be quick because you've already had your dinner and you want to be elsewhere, but the antiquarian library is not a retail library like the Brookline libraries are, but it still is a collection. And the challenge in any library is how you make the collection as accessible as possible to the community you're serving. And at the Antiquarian Society, we were serving primarily a community of scholars and students and people who are really interested in original source material. And at the Brookline Libraries, obviously what we're doing is we're trying to disseminate as much knowledge and safe space and things as possible. So they're different in that at the Antiquarian Society, we were not open stack. We would not have a cafe in the Antiquarian Society. It just would be an impossible thing to do. But at a place like the Brookline Library, I can tell you at the Antiquarian Society, we always wanted to have a cafe because we always wanted to be a place where people could come in and talk over a document, talk over something that they were discussing and passionate about. And because of the nature of our collections, we couldn't do that. What we could do at the Antiquarian Society was digitize our materials and make them available digitally, which people can eat their dinners right on top of their screen and we don't care because it's just an image. But the missions were very similar. The granularity of how you make it happen on a transactional basis was different because of the nature of what our collection was. But what Sarah and her excellent staff has been doing is precisely what I would do if the Antiquarian Society had broadly disseminable material to share.
The other, the other aspect of your resume that intrigued me is Vice President and Chief Development Officer, Friends of the High Line. I assume you're talking about the park that was built on the old railroad system.
Indeed, yes.
Yeah. And when were you there? You didn't indicate the dates.
Yeah, that was, actually, my position with the High Line terminated with the crash in 2008 when half of all of our money disappeared. And I was the one person who was not the founder, who was at a significant point on the payroll, and that is just how it ended. But it was and is a wonderful project and I'm mindful of the fact that it was just, it was an honor to be affiliated with it because it was change happening in a place that we all think about. I mean, as Sarah and I have talked about previously, I've worked for years advocating for libraries and other non-profit institutions. And you always struggle mightily. You're like a little gerbil on a wheel, trying to get people to care and trying to get people to show up. And at the High Line, if we sent out 10 invitations, we got 15 responses saying yes. You know, people just wanted to be a part of it and affiliate themselves with it. And it was, it was, it was a wonderful experience, but I'm mindful of the fact that not every place is the High Line when it's coming into its own being. And now that it's going to be expanded, it's going to become even better. And, you know, it's just a wonderful place.
Great, thank you. So let's move to the next, next thing. Okay, someone's waiting at me. Next is Steve Tow.
Great, well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity. I know it's been a long evening. So I've been a Brookline resident since 2001 and I've raised two children here. My son is a recent graduate from BHS and my daughter is a seventh grader at Pierce. My family and I were frequent users of the library when our children were younger and, you know, I've always really found the library to be a fantastic local.
Excuse me, Mr. Tow, could you, could you speak into the microphone a little more closely? It's hard to hear you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was just saying, I've always found the library to be just a fantastic local institution, you know, with an excellent collection and all sorts of really just delightful creative services and activities to enrich our community. You know, I've loved libraries since I was a little kid. You know, checking out huge stacks of books every week when my mom would take me to the library and so, you know, when I saw the, that the library was looking for trustees, I thought I would raise my hand. You know, I'd really like to be more involved in our local government, kind of following the example of my wife, Anne Kaminsky, who some of you may know. She's at Memorial Building Commission, the UK Commission, a couple other things. So, so I work with startup companies for a living. I, you know, I will be the first to admit that I do not have a lot of experience working with libraries. But, you know, as I looked at what a library trustee does, you know, I mean, I know that the trustees are responsible for overseeing the budget, the services, and the policies of the library. And I think that my decade of experience in venture capital has really given me a lot of relevant experience with these things. I mean, I'm not an accountant. I don't have a finance degree, but I have had a lot of exposure to the finances of small organizations with big ambitions. I was also on the Budget Committee of my kid's daycare center for several years. So, and I know a little bit about nonprofit fundraising, fundraising, thanks to Anne's long career in that field. I've had a lot of exposure also to organizational governance through my role as a board observer and board member at a wide range of companies over the years. You know, I've been through everything from rapid growth to bankruptcy, office moves, website makeovers, hiring and firing senior executives, lawsuits by competitors, and even disgruntled employees. So I think that experience and perspective would, you know, be helpful as the, as a trustee advising the library's management team on, you know, how to handle things as they come up. Finally, you know, as much as libraries are about books and information, you know, the library is also a venue where the community accesses technology. You know, this is an essential public service in a rapidly changing 21st century world. And I think that my work with startups gives me some insight into the future direction of information technology. And, you know, if chosen to serve, I would think I would be able to find ways to apply that knowledge to the library's operations and its services. So thank you for consideration again, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Questions from the select board? Ms. Hamilton?
It's funny that you bring up fundraising. One of the most fascinating things that I think I've discovered while serving on the select board is that the library trustees, you know, definitely oversee the budget as allocated by the town, but there is a foundation as well. What do you know about it and do you have any ideas? Because we're heading into a very uncertain fiscal year, and that foundation will probably come in very handy.
Yeah, so I don't know a lot about it. You know, I understand that the library is funded from a mix of, you know, town budget and fundraising. You know, candidly, I think that there's probably something that can be done there. This is probably going to be a tough time to be doing fundraising, just given all the other priorities out there, you know, especially with the pandemic and all the challenges that has created. But, you know, I think that a fundraising campaign for the library would be, would be an interesting thing to think about. And, you know, I what the library's plans are, but are really gonna need funding or whether they're gonna need a capital campaign to do, you know, to finance improvements in the facilities. So it's something I'd be, you know, happy to learn more about and help out with. And, you know, I do want to point out that even though I don't know a lot about libraries today, I mean, an essential part of what I do for a living is to be, you know, is to learn very quickly about new fields. I talk to several hundred companies a year, so you have to be a quick study. And I think I can bring that to the library.
Thank you. Unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move on to the next interviewee. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Thank you.
I think the next person is let's see, who's next? Susan Zelka? Sorry, no, Rachel Oberai Salz.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a Brookline resident and have accessed the library, both Pleasant Street and Washington Street. And I value the service and I look forward to the opportunity to be able to contribute. In India, I established a library. I was with USAID. I was at the IT Conpoor Computer Center. And through USAID, I was able to bring in material from the US. And this is really the first computer library that was in India. And people came from industry to use it. From, this was in the Indian Institute of Technology in Conpoor that was established through USAID. But all the other institutes of technology came to use the center simply because the library was there, the ability to develop software. I joined Digital Equipment Corporation, built a business in bioinformatics, and brought a proof point. That's me. I don't know if you recognize the gentleman, Jim Watson, who got the Nobel for the double helix, and I'm there with him. So I provided all the computing capability for Cold Spring Harbor Lab, where he was the director. And at MIT, I established a managed industry of relationships. The relationships included fundraising because there was a fee for joining the MIT Industrial Liaison Program. And the kinds of agreements that I brought were typically at $25 million, which ran at about $5 million a year. So I needed to have a broad scope of understanding of where the technology was heading and where the opportunities were. So here is another image. I don't know if you can see it. I'm with Raphael Reif, who's the president of MIT. He's right next to me. And across from us is Zhang Rumin, who's the founder and CEO of Hire, which is the fourth-largest appliance company in the world. So I've learned how to deal with top management in industry. Perhaps that's not the interface that I would have at the library, but I've been able to build from, really from next to nothing. When I joined MIT, there was none of this fundraising in the organization where I was. So at MIT, I established and managed industry relationships to support industry objectives and fund MIT research. Yesterday, I exchanged email with R&amp;D leader of Citibank. The subject was MIT resources. Today, I exchanged emails with the head of research for SNCF, which is the front railway. The subject was technology advances using hydrogen as a clean fuel. So here is one more photo. And that is the Vice President of Citibank New York, and that's me. I organized a conference of 500 people at Citibank in New York. So I've done projects of various kinds in various places. And I believe I can transfer some of what I know to the objectives that the Brookline Library has. So my mission has been to identify and connect MIT expertise and resources in areas that align with industry objectives. I now connect industry through MIT Open Learning. Open Learning is MIT's courses available both for industry as well for individuals, and many of them are free. So that, in a sense, it's a library. It is a different kind of a library. It's a library that you define a subject and you get a course on that subject, rather than a book or magazine or something comparable. So knowledge can be transferred in many ways. I look forward to engaging with the Brookline Board of Library Trustees and sharing my experience with the colleagues on the board and learning from them. My experience may be different from the experience that colleagues on the board have, but I would imagine that I would complement that and perhaps bring some new perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're almost at time. So if, are there any other questions from the select board? Seeing none, thank you very much, and we will move on to our next.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So Sasan, whenever you want to get started, we're trying to abide by two minutes for an intro and to allow for three minutes for a question.
Hey, guys, I'm back. I apologize for losing you, but that's life in the technology world. Thank you heavily for taking over.
Mr. Zelka, this is Devin. I just wanted to ask you to check your audio connection in maybe the down, the left bottom-left corner to make sure that it looks like you're wearing AirPods, that they're connected as the microphone. You are unmuted, but we can't hear you. So we can't hear you at this time, but if you just want to click on that little up arrow and make sure that the microphone is either the same as the built-in or connected to your headphones, you might just need to unpair them.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yep, you're all set to go and your time will start when you're ready.
I'll start now. I want to first thank the select board for your strong condemnation of the hideous hack that happened last week. I've been a Brooklyn resident for over 20 years. I've moved here as a teenager from Iran and attended Brooklyn Public School. Coolidge Corner Library was my second home as I learned English. I'm currently Town Meeting Member from Precinct 14, and I'm board member for nonprofit organization Brookline. As an immigrant refugee from Middle East, I can reflect and provide the viewpoints of bilingual individuals, including those for whom English is not their first language. Brookline has a large bilingual population and their needs are different than the native speakers, and I want to be their voice on the trustees. As someone who has the select seat, I'm sensitive to the challenges faced by those with special needs. I'm committed to ensure that their voices are heard. As an engineer, entrepreneur, and technologist, I can provide the board with skills in high-tech, as well as help the board plan for the future. As an under-40 father of young children, I can provide the board with with the younger generation perspective and help reach out to fellow young parents to make sure that they know about and contribute exciting programming for families. Want to make sure we build a library for 21st century. I have two young children who are growing up in the digital world. And I want to make sure our libraries are prepared for this generation. And if you have any questions, prepare to answer it.
Okay, any questions from the select board? Mr. Vanskaya. You're muted. It's been Skye, you're muted.
Got it, got it. I'll say hi to Sasan as a person that I know well through town meeting connections and other connections. And as I have thanked so many others for their willingness to come forward and to serve on the library Board of Trustees, I'd like to thank Sasan. Sasan, you, there's some things that I don't know about you or didn't know until today. And part of what, part of that is your, your background in technology. And I just wonder if you could make a little bit of a connection between your technology knowledge and your technology skills and how that might be come into play on the library Board of Trustees.
Sure, let me reflect by the fact that, you know, as someone who has the selection and work with other individuals who have disabilities, technology is something that's enabling a lot of people with disability to be able to experience library in a more inclusive way. So audiobooks, for example, have expanded people who have So audiobooks, for example, have expanded people who don't necessarily have sight to be able to experience books that weren't necessarily, and they had access to. Other technologies that are coming to mind is, you know, in terms of, I worked on technology on reading text using cameras. So I think that's going to be another big thing that's going to happen, that's going to allow people. So someone who has dyslexia and may read something and may not necessarily understand it, they can use another way of technology to get that information, you know, to be able to have the software read that text to them. Or, you know, fix a sentence that they've written. Software can go and help fix that. So that's what I can bring to the table. I work in medical devices. So again, and my specialty for five years was basically optics. So integrating cameras and enabling people to see and be able to see. So that's kind of the expertise I want to bring to the table.
Thank you.
Okay, this is our last candidate, and I think, you know, we will conclude. Thank you, Mrs. Zelka. For coming before us. I guess the next step is for us as two boards to vote. And what I think we should do is just go down the list of board member, trustee members, and indicate our preferences. Why don't we take just a couple minutes to review any notes we've taken? And just sort of think through who we want to select for the appointment. Is that going to be the best way to do it, Chris? Stanislawka?
Hi, yes. So I think if we could just, we'll do one election first for, I believe it's Pooja's position, correct? And, oh, sorry, Vivian's position. And then, once we've determined whoever fills that slot, then we'll do it a second time so that we can have a majority for the first position.
Are both positions for the same term?
No.
Okay, so tell us what the different terms are.
So I think it is three years for the first term. And then it's just three months essentially for the second term.
Okay, is that Vivian's term, this three years?
Yes. Oh, I think Michael Burstein is going to correct me.
It was Mike Burstein, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. So basically, we have two different openings. And what we've decided is that we wanted to vote on Vivian's seat first, because Vivian's term expires this May, this year in 2021. So whoever we select for Vivian's term, this May would be running for the regular three-year term, assuming that she chooses to run, which we The second seat that we want to do second is Pooja's. Pooja's term expires next year, in 2022. But as I, as our understanding, as I think you can confirm, is that anybody we appoint does have to run this May to fill out the rest of the term. So the second person would end up having to run this May for one more year, and then would run again in 2022 for three years. So essentially, what we want to do is have our first vote be for the person who's only going to have one election to worry about, that would be this year. And then the second vote would be for the person who will have two elections, one this year and one next year.
Okay, thanks for making this simple, Ms. Hamilton.
I think I would benefit from having the library trustees vote first. Since this is, you know, a member of their board, I would just like to get a sense of, you know, what they're looking for in a candidate and who they were impressed by.
All right, that would be very helpful if you're willing to do that. Are you willing to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to respond to something that one of my colleagues put in the chat. Carol Axelrod, I just want to make sure this is clear. And Carol, it's neither, it's true that if we were Pooja's, I guess you'd say that person has a longer term, but both candidates have to run this year, no matter what. So it's really a question of, you know, giving one candidate only one election. They would run this year, and then they'd have, for the three-year term. And then the second candidate will have to run this year for one year, and then has to run again. And that's why we want to do Vivian's first and then Pooja's.
Is that clear to everyone on the select board? Okay, so who's going to run the role for the library trustees? Chris, you can do that, or? Who's the chair of the library board?
Reg Healy is the chair of the library board, but Michael Burstein's been doing our roll call because he, I think, knows all of us alphabetically really well.
Okay, so Mr. Green, you want me to call the names of just the library trustees first and who we're voting for for this first seat?
Yes, I think that's, that's what Ms. Hamilton suggested, along with some sort of color commentary as to, you know, why you selected them, why each of you selected that person. So we're going for the first seat for Vivian, what's her last name?
Goldman.
Goldman. His term expires in May. The person in this seat would have to run in May for a three-year term, just like the person we assigned to Pooja Maida's seat. Okay.
Okay.
Let's try to, let's try to do this.
Okay, I will call the roll, and each of us will vote. I will, I'll just start off just by saying, Mr. Chair, that I think the board as a whole, and we were impressed by the quality of all the candidates, and we all found this a very difficult decision. And we do hope that some of the candidates will consider other ways to help the library in the future, even if they are not selected for this position.
Yeah.
Carol Axelrod.
You're muted. I said, I guess somebody has to go first. My first choice is Kristen Hung. Why? She just seems to me to be one of the most impressive, published, articulate, well, with her perspectives in order, with priorities that matter to most of us in Brookline, I think, as far as diversity and education, and that she's a library lover, and I was just completely blown away by her. I would love to have her on the board.
Michael Burstein, I also cast my vote for Kristen Hung. Chris Trenya-Salka.
I am also voting for Kristen Hung. She's incredible, articulate. Her, her wealth of perspectives that she brings and the different communities that she's involved in and works with would be a great asset to the board and would help us to move our library forward in being even more community responsive to the needs, especially as we work to figure out how to provide resources in this pandemic times.
Reggie Healy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent, because I am not good at this. I'm going to put my first vote also for Kristen Hung because of her abilities and eagerness, and and we need her. So I vote for her too.
Gary Jones.
You're muted, Gary.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. My first choice is a young woman that struggled as an immigrant to become a citizen in the United States. And she's worked for a considerable time over the years with Brookline Access TV, and has worked with the library, filming events in the library. And not only that, we have a Chinese collection in Coolidge Corner that's like a stepchild. And I know that she said that she wants to work with that Chinese collection and has done it in the past. And we talk about having diversity. Well, you know, she represents diversity, and she's also a person. There's a diversity in several ways, because she's not the son or a daughter of an immigrant. She's an immigrant herself. And I, for one, admire her accomplishments in becoming a citizen, and nowadays wanting to be a citizen and remain a citizen. And I think she would be a good addition to the library board. Thank you.
Gary, could you give the name of the person you're voting for, please?
Tracy Chen, right, Gary?
Yeah, Tracy. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I mention her name?
You did not give the name.
I did everything except tell you who she was. Tracy Chen.
Thank you. Karen Livingston.
I cast my vote for Kristen Hung.
Carol Lohe.
You're muted, Carol.
Carol mute.
You're still muted.
Better?
Yes.
Well, now you've given me a chance to say what I think and not only who I'd like to vote for, which is Kristen Hung. During the interview, she talked about her job as a surgeon, and she does a particular kind of surgery. And she explained that her patients have often said to her, you can fix that. I didn't know, I didn't have to live that way. And in her conversation, she then made that clear that that is something that also applies to any number of library users. And that sense of what the library is, I found incredibly sensitive and very much a vision for what we want our library to continue to be.
John Margolis.
My vote is for Babu Krishnamurti. I want to say that this is an extremely difficult choice. There are at least six or more of the candidates that I would be more than happy with, and it's difficult to distinguish among them. But I thought that she, in her manner and her enthusiasm, not that she was the only one who was enthusiastic. Her professional background, I noticed that she mentioned that she's an ethicist. It seems to me that that's something, not that our board needs in particular, but that libraries and society need. So that's why I'm going to cast my vote for her.
Winnie Martin Page.
Hi, thank you so much to the chair and the select board for having us. I cast my vote similarly for Kristen Hung. This was a hard choice, but I want to echo some of the compliments that my colleagues gave in Kristen's favor. She's a phenomenal candidate. And I think her, her work and her, in her work and her resume and her interview, she's shown a lengthy commitment to democratizing areas where marginalized folks have been disadvantaged, whether that be in public health, whether that be in medicine. And Reg, our chair often calls the library our citadel of democracy. And so that her values really align with the mission and purpose of the library. And in this time, particularly with events that happen in this nation, I really appreciate her ability to apply a socioeconomic, gender, ethnic orientation, equity lens to analysis of problems and issues. And I think that would be invaluable to, to the board, to many boards in our town right now. And so we're lucky to have her interested in the library.
Judith Vanderkenny.
I would also like to cast my vote for Kristen Hung for the reasons that all my colleagues have previously stated so eloquently. I couldn't help to top those, so I'll just go with the flow and add my voice to theirs. Thank you.
Mr. Green, would you like me to call the role on the select board as well?
No, I'll call that role.
Very good.
So select board members can indicate their reason for their selection if they wish, or they can just hop on the library trustees' reasons, whatever. So let's start with respect to Vivian Goldman's seat for a three-month term with election in May for a three-year term. Ms. Heller.
I'm going to also vote for Kristen Hung. I was impressed with her, I think. Truthfully, it's a very difficult choice. I mean, there were so many great candidates. But I do feel that her background, her vivacity, her, you know, when I think of her organizational skills and work ethic combined to convince me that she would be a really excellent candidate.
Ms. Hamilton.
For all of the reasons stated by many of the people on this, in this meeting, Kristen Hung.
Okay, Mr. Fernandez.
Same here, informed practice, the approach to equity is as important now as ever. And in an exceptional field, Kristen Hung gets my vote.
Okay, Mr. Skoye.
Thank you. My intent from the beginning has been to respect the preference of the library Board of Trustees in this matter. And in that regard, if not for the fact that she already has enough votes to secure this, this election, I would be voting for Kristen Hung. Knowing that she already has enough votes to secure this election offers me the opportunity to say a word of support for one of the other extremely qualified candidates. And I want to join Michael Burstein in voting for Babu.
Michael Burstein voted for Christine Hung.
I'm sorry, Michael. Who did, who did I misquote? I misquoted who voted for Babu, sorry.
Oh, John Margolis.
Jonathan Margolis, thank you.
John Margolis voted for.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Michael. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, I guess it's up for, it's for me to give my vote. Now, it looks like there's a consensus that Christine Hung is the library trustee's choice. I guess I'm, I'm willing to vote for her because, you know, she does bring some things that I think are very important in this town. Commitment to equity, but also commitment to looking at issues of access, which are important from the standpoint of, you know, both language access, disability access issues. You know, you can go down the list. But there are a number of other candidates who also bring those strengths to, would bring those strengths to the library. And I hope the library trustees keep in touch with the applicants and find other ways to make use of their, their skills if they're not selected for the library board. So I guess my, my, my choice is Kristen Hung for that reason. Okay, so what's our next step, Mr. Burstein? You can add up the votes?
Well, I would defer to Ms. Trenya-Salka, but I can tell you that we need to have a majority of the votes, and Kristen Hung does in fact have more than eight, or the eight or more votes needed. So she has been appointed chair, appointed, sorry, to the Board of Trustees in that seat. And she will need to go to, get herself sworn in. And we need to make sure that the town clerk's office has her assigned to the correct seat. Chris, do you want me to?
Yes, so, once this is all said and done, perhaps not later this evening, but tomorrow, Karen Livingston and I, from the trustee search committee, will reach out to all the candidates, as well as the two that are appointed with the appropriate instructions of contacting the town clerk's office to get sworn in. And then for everyone else, you know, just whoever doesn't get appointed, I hope they all run in this year's election and in every you know, just whoever doesn't get appointed, I hope they all run in this year's election and in every election thereafter as well. So and I think we've all, as a library board, tried to impress upon them over our three nights of meetings as well. But yes, thank you, everyone. And if we can turn now, Michael, to the next vacancy, but then Carol Axarad has asked if you could do a reverse order on the trustees for the tally.
And I am happy to do that. I can call the role in reverse alphabetical order for the trustees. So this is the vote for Pooja Metta's seat. The trustee who was appointed, the candidate appointed to this seat, is going to run in May for a one-year term election, and then will be running again next year for the standard three-year term. Judith Vanderkenny.
This is great. I never get to go first in an alphabetical. John, I know you can sympathize with that. I'd like to cast my vote for Matthew Shakespeare. I think his skills are remarkable, and he also told the trustees a story that indicates how well he understands what libraries mean in the lives of people, what they can mean. He told us a personal story of his own experience that I found very moving. And so I cast my vote for Matthew Shakespeare.
Winnia Martin Page.
I similarly cast my vote for Matthew Shakespeare. I think he will be a tremendous addition to the board.
John Margolis.
I will also cast my vote for Mr. Shakespeare. I think we can improve the library's collection of dramatic works, and perhaps he can work on that.
Carol Loie. Carol, you're on mute.
You're mute, Carol.
I'm also, I'd also like to vote for Matthew Shakespeare because of a commitment. Sorry, can you hear me? Is this okay?
Yeah.
Because of his commitment to social justice and his understanding of some of the subtleties. They're actually not so subtle, but he certainly was one who spoke quite eloquently about how access to technology is an incredible divider in our country and our community. And one of the things he was committed to was helping us as a library do whatever we can do to make that gap smaller.
Karen Livingston.
I'm voting for Matthew Shakespeare. Now that we have Kristen Hung ratified, Matthew's skills are very different to the ones that Kristen bring to the board. So I think that we'd be getting an unbelievable skill set addition that would help the town a lot.
Gary Jones.
Yes, for the reason I mentioned before, I continue to vote for Tracy Chen. Thank you.
Regina Healy.
I'm going to be different. I'm going to vote for Sasan Zelka. And I have three reasons for supporting his candidacy. Not in order of their importance. I'm not sure I could make them in order of their importance, but one of the important things is he's dyslexic. And I think that that is an issue that libraries need to think about in providing services to a particular segment of the community. And certainly, to the best of my knowledge, not many of the present trustees know anything about the needs of people with the reading needs or learning needs of people with dyslexia. And the second reason, again, not in order, is that he is an immigrant from the Middle East. He brings us a language that we don't have. He brings us a viewpoint that we don't have, particularly from an area that that we should and want to reach out to. So if there are, I don't know how many immigrants from the Middle East are in Brookline, but there must be a lot, and I think he might be useful in reaching out to them. And the third reason, and the last reason you'll be glad to know, is that he is terrifically skilled in technology and probably could show me how to turn on my computer. That's it.
Chris Trunusalkit.
I vote for Matthew Shakespeare. Again, his perspectives, his story that he has told of both growing up here, moving away, and then coming back to raise his family, and just how much he and his partner appreciate the libraries and what they, and then just all the skills that he can bring. His interest in making the libraries a safe place for everyone that's inclusive, his social justice orientation, there's so much. But Matthew Shakespeare has my vote.
Michael Burstein, that's me. I will, I am going to also cast my vote for Matthew Shakespeare. As we've said before, as I've said before, we have a lot of great candidates who applied for this position for the appointed positions. I found that the story, the personal story that Matthew Shakespeare told us about the library, not just about inclusiveness, but his own personal story of how it saved him. I find that an extremely vital and important story in a time like now, as long with all the other things that people have said. I wish we could vote for many more people. A few of us in the trustees have joked that that, you know, that some of these people are more qualified than we ourselves are. But I cast my second vote for Matthew. Carol Axelrod.
Hi, Carol.
Carol, you're still on mute, so we cannot hear you.
I said, of course, I'm going to be different. For Babu. Not that there's a whole lot of chance that she'll win. Of course, as she did, we have two doctors on the board, which, you know, that would be a first, I think. But I was just really impressed with her commitment to libraries, to the ways that she volunteers. And I think more than anything, that I don't know whether it was while she was in medical school, but at one point she had three tiny boys at the same time. And I think now she has three big boys. So I think her organizational skills must be over the moon. And she was very articulate and clear and energetic, and I liked her a lot. But I think I'm the only one.
Mr. Green.
Okay.
Turn this over to you.
Okay, could someone mute their? mute their audio? Okay, someone has background noise. Please mute your audio. So, okay, for the select board. Let's start out for Pooja Mayda's term, which expires in 2022. So this person would run for election in 2021 and then have to do it again in 2022. So who can handle that task? Ms. Heller.
I'm going to cast a vote here for Tracy Chen. I think that I agree with Gary that her immigrant background and also her Chinese background is very important. I'd like to see the someone with that background on the library board of trustees. I know that Kuj Corner has probably got the largest collection of Chinese books in the Commonwealth, I understand, for a town library. I think that's very impressive. And I do think there are many, many, many patrons of the library who are Chinese, and I believe that she would be a very good candidate.
Ms. Hamilton.
I will vote for Mr. Shakespeare. I think he does bring a worthy perspective and a commitment to the town and its libraries.
Mr. Fernandez.
Again, amazing candidates. I have been similarly enchanted by Mr. Matthew Shakespeare, and will cast my vote for him.
Steven Skoye.
So just to repeat my point here, Matthew Shakespeare is now the person who is in the fortunate position of having nine, looks to me like nine votes. He has secured election. My commitment was to, if he had only seven votes, make sure that he got the eighth vote necessary to secure this, because he's the clear preference of the library trustees. But now I have the luxury of casting a vote for someone in addition to, you know, saying some nice words about Matthew, who I think is terrific. And I'm going to have cast a vote for Sasan Zelka. I think that Regina Healy and I had some sort of a mind meld tonight because she said everything I would have said about why Sasan is going to or would make such a great addition to the library trustees board. One thing I would add, and that's only one thing, and that is that in addition to everything that Regina said, he's a person of notable people skills and political skills. And I think political skills are great skills to have. And it's too bad that sometimes they get, you know, they get a bad reputation. But I think the position is one that all of his attributes could be a benefit to that position. And in addition, he's got the, I'm not saying the other candidates don't have people and political skills, but I know for a fact that Sasan does. I want to, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I want to point out something that was pointed out to me by a text message during this discussion of the vote. And I only bring it up because I just want to be sure that no one who's listening is confused as to what this whole process of they run for election in May and then they run for election, you know, depending on how long your term is. Again, this person, and I don't think this person is being mischievous, they're just pointing out the facts. The two who are elected tonight could actually run for the other position. In other words, they're not locked into running for the term that they are serving. They could run for the term that the other person is serving. So just to get the message out to any other folks who are considering running for this office, everybody, including the two people holding the office, have the option of voting for, excuse me, of running for either seat. So I just want to put that out there.
Okay, thank you for putting it out there. So I guess, you know, I would like to think along the lines that Mr. Skoye is thinking, meaning that because the library board trustee's choice is guaranteed a position, I have the luxury of voting for someone else. But, you know, I have four, I think, four other persons, four other individuals that I would vote for, and who have incredible skills and would make great contributions to the library trustees. But I don't want to, it doesn't make any sense to vote for them, so I'm going to vote for Mr. Shakespeare. And again, emphasize that, you know, there are a number of people among the applicants who, that trustees must reach out to because of the type of skills and energy they could bring to the library in terms of issues of technology, as other people have talked about, in terms of issues of, you know, understanding access to me more than just disability access, that includes a variety of other things like language, you know, and many other things. And there is also, I mean, everyone talked about equity. I think, you know, I would look at some of the ways that people talk about equity as distinguishing them in terms of what they could bring to the select board. And of course, we have a number of candidates who are immigrants or first-generation people who can bring the perspective of their home countries to the library board, as well as Brookline generally, you know, giving us a better appreciation for differences, both in the sort of obvious ways that we think about that, as well as the not-so-obvious ways. So anyway, all that to say, I'm giving my vote to Mr. Shakespeare. And also, he has an interesting name.
Thank you.
Now, if Mr. Chaucer had applied, I would have a difficult time there.
Thank you. So I will be in touch with the two candidates who will be appointed tomorrow likely, or maybe late tonight, and then also to everyone else who has applied. But, you know, thank you so much to each of the select board members for their thoughtful consideration and review of the materials and their time this evening on a long agenda. Karen Livingston and I were on the trustee search committee. We really appreciate your help and partner. And obviously, I have to thank Devon Fields as well. She's been a great help in doing this joint convention. And of course, our director, Sarah Slimen. And we've been really fortunate to have amazing candidates. So I'm very excited because I'm hopeful that that translates into many people running in each of our future annual elections as well, because they all bring an incredible amount of experience and diversity of perspectives that's sorely needed. So thank you. And thank you all for your continued support of our libraries.
Thank you. So let's get back to our agenda. I see that Mr. Loie has been dragged to our meeting by his wife. And we can interview him for the position on the conservation commission. Why don't we go back to that item, so we can take advantage of Mr. Loie's presence here? So introduce yourself and explain why you want to continue doing that work on the conservation commission.
Thank you very much, Chairman Green. As you all know, the primary function of the conservation commission is to administer the Wetlands Protection Act, and that's certainly important work. And I think that I contribute to it because I've had experience in development issues generally and environmental issues related to development. But from a conservation commissioner's perspective, Brookline is lucky because unlike some communities, we're not inundated with development proposals with wetlands protection issues. We certainly have our share, but we also have time to think about the bigger picture. So we have to go back years. Betsy Shure Gross and many others protected and developed Moles Pond. And recently, we've spent, again, spent years and years working on restoring the Muddy River, which is getting closer to completion. So in that kind of regard, the one thing that I do is that I'm the conservation commission's representative for the Brookline Conservation Land Trust. But where I actually put most of my effort is that years ago, I was designated the conservation commission's representative for the select board's climate action committee. And for the past four years, I've been co-chair with Nancy Heller. And that's where I put most of my proactive energy. There's not going to be a whole lot of environment for the Concom to protect if we don't get a handle on climate change. So it seems to me it's an important thing to work on. So I foresee myself for the next year spending a lot of time, probably most of my time, supporting our new assistant director for sustainability planning, who we hope will be hired quite soon. And with him or her and people in the planning department and lots of other people thinking about how to refine and even restructure the climate work we're doing here in Brookline.
Thank you. So questions from the select board, Mr. Loie. We all know, but surely we can come up with some questions for him.
You want me to be first, don't you?
Yes. Did you see my chat message? Just kidding.
Just in case anybody's wondering, I'm that annoying kid in school who always got my hand up in the air first. Just in case anybody's wondering, I'm that annoying kid in school who always got my hand up in the air first, you know, but uh that some things never change. So um, uh, Werner, hi, and thank you so much for being willing to serve again. Um, and I, I just want to share with everybody that um Werner and I have had some wonderful conversations about various aspects of climate change. And one of the things that um has been uh on his mind and on my mind lately um is the um I think he referred it to it as a runaway trend of uh teardowns. Um, and uh, for reasons of appreciation of our historic streetscapes, but also for reasons of um understanding that demolitions have a connection to the problems of uh that that have been feeding climate change. Um, Werner, if you don't mind, would you just help, help us all better understand that connection a little bit? Teardowns and uh and climate change?
Sure. I, I, I think it's a very interesting issue because it tends to be divisive to some extent um that uh not as divisive as some issues, but um, but there clearly are people in Brookline that, that completely legitimately want to preserve the, the good things we have. And there are people that are more focused on uh building more housing, affordable housing, uh, building the tax base and so on. So um i- it seems to me that uh, what, what I'm concerned about, that the first thing I should say is, is that I, I sometimes get concerned that we do in Brookline do too much kind of uh, we, we talk about planning, but we actually mostly, we mostly talk. We don't do a lot of really good planning. We do, we do a lot of beating around the bush. And I, I absolutely think that we should, we should do more planning, but by the same token, I think we have to take advantage of opportunities and and do projects, do things, take, do things that, that, that move the ball forward right away. The, the issue with uh particularly climate change and teardowns is that only recently really have people started real, really thinking in the climate change community, the whole science of climate change has moved so quickly in the last 10 years. And only recently have people really started to think about the problem of embodied energy, particularly in uh, in new construction, that you tear down an old building, uh, the um, the, there's already energy sunk into that. That, that, that doesn't matter, the energy that went into building that building. But when you tear it down, it takes energy to tear it down. It takes uh energy and other resources to to, to put all the old bricks in the landfill. But even more important, uh, you, when you build a new building, you, you not only use all the energy that's, that uh was required to create the new uh, the new materials, but also to ship them and the labor and so on. And, and, and i- in the in the energy and in architecture community, people are just really developing uh solid methodologies to uh, to try to measure that, to try to get a sense of, is it really, is it really in the long term, in thirty, fifty, a hundred years, better to tear down an old and inefficient building uh and and build a new uh very efficient building? Or is it better to uh, to, to save the building, retrofit it, change it and, and make it efficient? And we ba- basically don't know the answer to that. And I see that as a place where, again, there, there's, there's potential for conflict. There are people saying, we shouldn't tear down these buildings. There are people saying we need to build new buildings. And what I would like to see us, we've been a leader in many areas and, and it seems to me this is a new area where I would like to see us uh be ahead of the curve. And I don't know what the next big teardown in Brookline might be. Um, but I would like to think that maybe we could be in the lead. We could get some, some funding from somebody like the Rocky Mountain Institute or from the state government or something to, to really do a state of the art analysis uh of uh, of a project that comes before us so that we can be leaders and making sure that if we tear it down, we're, we're tearing it down for a good reason. Or if uh, i- i- if uh, and we, we shouldn't be, certainly we shouldn't be tearing it down. It's a historic building or it's really important aesthetically or in terms of city planning, but, but if it's a building that's then, then we still should do the analysis and, and, and understand uh whether we're really moving forward or moving backward.
Uh, you know, there's also a tension between uh conservation issues, as you described them, and also population growth. Um, you know, Brookline might have sixty thousand people. It's not gonna be sixty thousand people forever. Um, you know, Boston is bulging at, at the seams, particularly, you know, uh, areas of uh black residents, Hispanic residents, you know, who have traditionally been kept out of Brookline. And may, you know, wanna, wanna move into uh town, but whatever the reason, you know, we're gonna grow. How, how do you factor in, you know, the um necessary growth of, of a, a community? Um, what, a community or a nation? Um, and uh, you know, the concerns that uh you expressed with respect to conservation?
Well, I think you're absolutely right in terms of the equity issues. I mean, it basically comes down to affordable housing in Brookline, right? I mean, things are so expensive in Brookline that we've got to do more affordable housing. Um, but uh, from an environmental point of view, you know, it was completely consistent that we, we need to build in cities and not build in the suburbs. And places like Brookline need to, need to make room for nor- new, more people while we preserve uh, uh, not preserve exactly what we have right now, but preserve a really livable, livable community that will change and evolve like the whole world changes and evolves. Uh, I mean, the, the particular thing that came up today on the town meeting member list service is, what's it, eighty-three um Longwood Avenue, I think, you know, so it's kind of okay, old uh house that's sitting surrounded by apartment buildings that's been a bed and breakfast. Well, it's across from uh Housing Authority Building that's ten stories tall. And a lot of people's instinct is, well, we ought to save that building. Well, you know, my, mine is the opposite. It's, my instinct is that, that, you know, that's, that's the kind of place where we have an opportunity to, to, to build housing and to have affordable housing. And again, I, it's my instinct. I haven't studied it in detail. We should have a process around that uh that, that allows uh people in the neighborhood to talk about what the neighborhood context is, that it should be a robust process. And, and ironically, o- often when it's a cha- uh, chapter forty B project, it, that's, that's when the most process actually it comes up. That's when there is good process. And, and also when there's a real opportunity to negotiate and to, and to get the kind of development that we want and to, and to bring in affordable housing too.
Any other discussion, questions? Ms. Heller?
Um, I've had the uh opportunity and pleasure to work with uh Werner for a number of years as co-chairs of the Climate Action Committee. And have to say, he's been an excellent co-chair. He uh had subcommittees. He works very hard. He's very thoughtful. Um, and uh, he's just been re-elected by the committee um to continue in his role. Uh, and we do face some challenges of uh reorganizing ourselves and figuring out how uh the Climate Action Committee will function uh in the future. And we're waiting until we have a sustainability coordinator, so we can have uh him or her participate in those discussions. But I, I will just tell you that I, I, he's been a very valuable member and he certainly represented the Conservation Commission um, uh, very, very well on that, on, on the Climate Action Committee. Um, so
Great.
Um, where, how long have you been on the Conservation Commission?
Too long to remember exactly.
One of those, one of those historical perspectives.
It's getting, it's getting close to twenty years, I bet.
Yeah.
Like fifteen, probably.
Okay, unless there are any other questions, um, you know, we can uh move on. Um, as you know, we'll vote on uh our appointments to the Conservation Commission at a future meeting. And uh Devon, of course, will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Ms. Goff. I see, I see that you're gonna talk to us about um what we need to clean up from town meeting. Or follow up from town meeting.
Good evening. Um, you should all have in your packet a memo um that I prepared that had um the outcome of town meeting along with some actions that we'll need the board to work on in the coming weeks. Um, so I can just start, uh, Article Eight. Article Eight called for an expanded membership on the HAB, and I believe that uh Devon has been getting the boards and commissions into tip-top shape and that she's already um, has the new membership in her listing and that uh ultimately there'll be uh interviews for these new slots. Um, so I think that one is underway. Just wanted to flag it for the board so that they're aware.
Um, oh, before you move on, Melissa.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, I, I serve on the HAB. I've talked to Roger Blood, who's the chair, and I know he is actively recruiting people for those uh, those spots. So it, it's not like no work has been done since we took the vote.
That's great to hear. Um, so the next article we have is Article Twelve, which is the Community Preservation Act. And um was very surprised to get the um certified vote from the Town Clerk's Office already. Um, normally we need to um kind of reach out to them first, but we had a lot of certified votes presented to us this week, which was really great. Um, so we are now uh checking with Town Council to find out what form we need to put this into for the board to take action on it. So that one is also underway as well. And the same thing with Article Thirteen, which is the Senior Property Tax Exemption as well. Um, we'll just need to convert the town meeting vote into something that the board could then vote. Um, so then we can send that on to legislature.
It, David Lescoye actually called me not too long ago and reminded me that, you know, we're gonna have to come up with a bylaw. So I'm, I'm pleased that you're already thinking uh, uh, about this step before we even get it ratified um by hopefully a townwide vote.
Mm-hmm. Um, the next article that we have is Article Fifteen, and so um we ha- already had a working group that was working towards a disparity study, and I believe that work is still underway. Um, I know that there's been some collaboration with Somerville as well. Uh, so at some point, uh, the board should put on their calendar, maybe for future calendar, an update from the group on the progress um towards the, towards the study. Um, and obviously, we put some funding in the purchasing department to help support um the goals as well. So we can just get an updated at a certain point in time, once the group is ready to provide that. Then the next one that we have is Article Nineteen and Twenty, um, well, really more so Nineteen.
Before you go there, I, was eighteen is the, what's the action that's supposed to happen from eighteen? The um
Oh, sorry. Did I skip over that one?
Ring choice voting.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I did.
Yeah.
That, that one should actually have, um, I thought I had made a note on that one. Eighteen does require a um of committee, that the, it's a select board committee, and I'm, I'm surprised I didn't update that. Um, the uh, so essentially, the board would need to assign the committee work to a member of the board. And then also um that, that member or a couple of members could work on a charge for the committee. Uh, and then we could begin the process of um figuring out how we want to fill those positions.
You did capture it. It's just listed in Article Twenty.
Okay, thank you. That one, because we just had talked about it too, so. Yep. So that, that's, um, so it's, at some point, we're gonna need to identify a board member to take this on, and then um, we'll have to have a charge available for the board to vote at a future meeting.
Okay, if any board member is particularly interested, should let Devon know and uh go from there.
Okay, um, Town Clerk, same um, same issue where we need to uh figure out what the correct procedure is to put a vote on the ballot for this um per the town meeting vote. So uh, we've reached out to Town Council and we'll have some information coming out of that uh shortly.
Can I um, just as, so that, that would be on the ballot for this May?
Yes.
And so in the event that um in the event that that doesn't pass, will folks still run this May for the next um, for the next term of, of Town Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
So this, this happened before when we had the um treasurer position convert, where um I believe the Assistant Treasurer at the time ran uh and won. Uh, but the, but the legislation passed or the vote passed and um they subsequently did not uh move into the Finance Director position.
Right, right. Okay.
Okay, so the next one we have is
There's Devon.
Article Twenty-seven, which was referred to planning. And so um, I believe that there will be articles available for um, the board to review prior to the warrant closing, but I will make sure that I reach out to Allison um, so that we can flag that for when we have our normal review before the warrant closes.
Very twenty-eight.
So the uh next uh item is fiscal education for town meeting members. Um, that is something that I believe that the Chair of the Advisory Committee is taking on, but obviously, the board knows that we are gonna be providing an education program this Thursday um, to kind of give some baseline understanding of the budget and the budget process. But I'm sure as we move forward into a a regular program, um, staff will be working with both school staff and town staff will be working with the Advisory Committee on a, on a, on a, an education program. And then the next article after that is the Budget Equity uh Resolution. And so um, at some point, the board uh should be uh, reaching out to DICR and um either working on an update or um I believe there's an interim report due before the thirty-first of March. Um, and so that, that's something that we should be aware of prior to maybe the warrant closing, just checking in with the DICR for an update on where they are with that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, um, Mr. Fernandez, since you're the liaison to the SCR, could you um to press uh, uh, Pester, Joanne, make sure that that gets done?
Is like, or? And so I just want to make sure that this is the the CDICR, not the ODICR, right? The Commission?
The Commission, yes.
And not the Office? Okay, got it.
Correct. I'm pretty sure it was, but I'll, I'll review.
Both, both are actually involved.
They're both involved? Okay. I'll, I'll reach out to both Lloyd and Joan.
Um, Thirty-three, uh Town School Partnership. So we have been working on improvements to the formula and also trying to make it a little bit easier to understand. Um, and obviously, we've talked about the um, the Budget Summit and Enhanced Engagement, and I think we're starting to make work on that uh for this season as well. The next item is Article Thirty-four, and I talked to Allison about this, and I, I believe that the um the scope of the Housing Production Plan will capture what the article calls for the planning department to do. Um, so that, that work is also underway as well. Then we have Article Thirty-eight, which uh is not uh for the board, but I just flagged this for the Town Clerk's Office because obviously um they need to be aware of some of the mandates that they have as well. So the Town Clerk's Office will need to transmit copies of the resolution to state officials, and that, those are listed in the article itself as well. Um, but we'll, we'll check in with the Town Clerk's Office and make sure they're aware of that as well. And then we have Article Thirty-nine, Legislation on the Adoption of the Fossil Fuel Free. And um, for this one, you know, I'm not sure, um, I know that there's a bill in front of the governor um, whether or not the board wants to wait for the outcome of that before filing this whole petition. Um, that, that's something that I think we should uh get a little sense of the board on that as well. But um, the Town Clerk has also provided the certified vote on that, and we can also um have Town Council prepare home, home rule legislation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Then there's one other item that's not on this list that I did want to flag to the board, that we will also be talking about at a future meeting as well. Um, as you know, that we normally go out for borrowing in the spring, and um, one of the things we're gonna need a little bit of uh we're gonna have a recommendation on shortly is um the status of the Oak Street properties. Now that we have um, town meetings authority to release those properties, um, we'll be putting forward a recommendation for you on that. We'll need to know whether or not um are the bonds that we go to uh permanently finance, the properties should be taxable or tax exempt. If we were gonna hold on to the properties, we would probably use tax exempt bonds. Um, but if we're thinking about uh selling the properties uh, that we probably would want to use taxable bonds for that.
If we're selling, huh, maybe this is a dumb question. If we're selling the property, why would, why do we need bonds?
Well, because we're at the point where we've already um did short-term borrowing for three years, and after three years, you need to permanently finance. Uh, but we also, e- even if we were, if we were to become landlords, I think there's implications there as well. So we need to make sure that we understand the status of the properties before we go out for borrowing.
Okay.
I would, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add that Special Town Meeting Three relating, excuse me, Special Town Meeting Two, Article Three was the Newbury, and we don't have to talk about that because we've already taken action on that. And I just wanted to inform you as well as the community that the town has taken title. We've closed on the property and we've taken title to that property, very significant development in the town.
Good, good, good. Thanks for bringing that up because I'm not sure that everyone focused in on the fact that we were closing around this time of the year. That's a big deal, so. Okay, thank you. Unless there's any further discussion, let's just move on. Getting late. Boards and commission appointments. So we have appointments to the, well, just the Preservation Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is a little complication though, because the Preservation Commission has two membership categories. One is the permanent regular members, and then there's alternate members. And so I think we should take those up separately.
Okay.
The regular members, there are five terms that are expiring, either in 19 and 20. We've interviewed all of them, all five members of the, of current members, the incumbents, if you will, are interested in, in being reappointed. But we also have an individual, John Spears, who interviewed for appointment. I believe Mr. Spears is willing and able to take either the permanent members or the alternate members. But I believe we have to consider him as the sixth candidate for five terms on the regular membership of the Preservation Commission. If he's not appointed to the regular member, you know, you have the opportunity to do it as an alternate, since there are so many vacancies on the alternate side. So what I believe I would like to do is ask for your, for the five members that each board member is interested in appointing or reappointing to the, to the full membership. Again, that's King, Ecker, Elfrin, Bachelor, Jack, and then Spears are the candidates there.
Okay, King, Alfred, Becker, who is the other two?
King, Ecker, Elfrin, Bachelor, and Jack, David Jack, J A C K, and then Richard Spears. Ms. Armstrong, who is a candidate, who is an incumbent in the alternate, is not interested in being promoted to the membership. So we'll deal with her the next, the next round here.
And, and how many candidates are there for the alternate position?
Just Ms. Armstrong, and then if you don't appoint Mr. Spears, he'd be another one. And there's four, four available terms there. There's already three vacancies on the alternate group.
So you're gonna, you're gonna.
Call, I'll call the roll and you'll, each board member will tell me the five members that they're interested in having been appointed or reappointed, as the case may be, to the, to the full members of the Preservation Commission.
Everyone understand what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I will, I'll go with, I'll start with you, Ms. Heller.
Okay, I vote for regular members David King, Jim Bachelor, Elton Elfrin, Wendy Ecker, and David Jack.
Thank you. And Dr. Fernandez?
I have the same list as Nancy.
Thank you. Heather Hamilton?
Same list as both Dr. Fernandez and Nancy Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Same list.
And Mr. Venskaya?
Same list.
Okay, so all of the current incumbents are reappointed to terms on the Preservation Commission. Now we move to the alternate membership, and there we have Ms. Armstrong, whose term is, is expiring. But we also have three vacancies, so I guess I would ask you to name two people. So we have Ms. Armstrong, who's interested in reappointment, and now Mr. Spears, who's, wasn't appointed as a permanent, but is eligible for that. So you just give me the two names, I guess.
So we, so we still have one vacancy that we have to fill.
We have actually two more after that.
Okay, let's get these done.
Yes, so I'll go in the same order, Ms. Heller.
Elizabeth Armstrong and Spears, you want me to say when their term expires? Her term would, Elizabeth, if she stays in the same slot, she would expire in 2023, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think you just need to give her names.
I mean, I think, I, I think under the circumstances, we'd probably put Mr. Spears in for the length, the longest term. Maybe, well, I'm not sure we can do that, right? Because it says a vacancy of her term expires in 2024. Yeah, I guess we could do that if we gave him a three-year term.
Okay, so Ms. Armstrong just goes into her regular, her regular term?
And Spears goes into, it's Jack Spears, right, yeah, John Spears. Yeah, he goes into the other, the longest term we have there.
Yeah, okay.
2024, I guess.
So given the fact.
Can you appoint somebody for more than three years?
Well, we're in 21 now, I guess, that's.
Oh, all right.
Say there. So maybe to avoid, since there's only two candidates and there's no competition, maybe, Mr. Chair, you, somebody could just make a motion to, to, to do that, to, to assign Ms. Armstrong, to reappoint Ms. Armstrong for a term expiring in 2023, and to appoint John Spears for a term expiring in 2024.
Okay, I move that we vote to appoint Ms. Armstrong for the term expiring in 2023, continuing her position on the Preservation Board. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Vanskoya?
Aye.
And Chair vote, aye. So I move that we appoint Ms. Spears, I'm sorry, Richard Spears.
John Spears.
John Spears, where'd I get Richard from? Appoint John Spears to the term expiring in 2024. All in favor, Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton? Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Vanskaya?
Aye.
And Chair vote, aye. And that ends our meeting. Anything else? Okay, so let's end the meeting. Good night.
Good night.